Are we joining tonight?
No.
No.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yanville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. We actually convened our meeting earlier in a special session to take interviews for our vacancies on the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee and the Napa County and Mosquito Abatement District Board. So we're convening our regular meeting now. I'll invite, roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Durham is absent.
Thank you. I invite Vice Mayor Ed Litas and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to adoption of tonight's agenda. I don't believe there are any changes. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to a proclamation we have tonight, and I don't see our recipient in the audience, so I will go ahead and read this for the public and for the record. We are acknowledging one of our wonderful restaurants here in Yanville, Red Restaurant, who just celebrated, I should say, its 10th anniversary. And so we are recognizing them with a proclamation which reads, "Whereas Chef Richard Reddington opened Red Restaurant in Yanville on November 12, 2005, to national accolades, including a nation's best new restaurant nomination by Esquire Magazine. He also was nominated Best Chef West Coast by the James Beard Foundation. And whereas the list of culinary awards received by Red include a one-star rating from The Michelin Guide from the years 2008 to 2013, three-and-a-half stars by San Francisco Chronicle food critic Michael Bauer, four-and-a-half stars on Yelp, and 27 out of 30 points by Zagat Rating System, all recognizing Chef Reddington's passion for wine country cuisine with influences from Asia, Europe, and Mexico. And whereas Chef Reddington earned culinary acclaim working at La Folie, Masses, Postrio, and Jardinere in San Francisco, as well as Park Avenue Cafe in New York and A Berge du Soleil in the Napa Valley. He and his team are a significant reason Yanville is recognized as the culinary capital of the Napa Valley and has become an international restaurant destination. Whereas Richard Reddington not only is a local restaurateur with Red and his Napa Valley pizzeria, Red Wood, but he has been a Yanville resident since 2006. Now therefore be it resolved by John F. Dunbar on behalf of the entire Yanville Town Council and community, recognize Red Restaurant on its 10th anniversary, and we offer our best wishes to Chef Richard Reddington and his team for continued success here in Yanville." So on behalf of all of them, congratulations, and they did throw a pretty nice anniversary party a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago. Okay, so we will get that to them. I'm sure they're busy with service right now. Next up, we have public comment. Now would be the time anyone in the audience would like to bring up an item that's not on our agenda tonight. Jerry, what do you have for us tonight?
I have to go. I'm on the Navis Church audio of the Yanville Church. I talked to George Hilton, my pastor, and they didn't talk about the memory committee for next year. And then the Lord answered my prayer last Saturday on my walk. And then Pacifician College Department is having a free Christmas concert in Green Choir and singing orchestra at 4:00 at the campus of PUC in England. And any of those who have friends or students in that program, please attend. It's 4:00 PM in the Cars Avenue Church next to our PUC, so that's all I have to say.
Jerry, what's the date of that concert?
December 4th.
December 4th?
Saturday.
At PUC.
Saturday at 4:00.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before the council? Yes. Is it on an item that we have on our agenda, Carl?
No.
Okay.
I've mentioned it before, and I constantly see cars turning on right on California Boulevard that are in the center lane instead of the right lane. I wondered if it's all possible to put a highway sign or an arrow for Highway 29? You follow what I'm saying?
Where exactly on California? Joe, are you nodding yes, you understand?
On Washington in California.
Oh, right. Right, right.
Yeah, at the stop sign there. There are people that don't know that it's a turn, you know, don't know where the highway's at, and I see that as, I hope there's never an incident there.
Right. I see our Public Works Director nodding his head and writing down the note, so we'll definitely...
He's a good man. I had dealt with him today, and he's very good. You got a good man there.
That's nice. Thank you, Carl.
I paid him for that.
Yeah. Anyone else have any issues they'd like to bring to the council? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to our consent calendar. We have items A through G that are presented for action if there is a motion.
Is anything going to get pulled?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent calendar items A through G.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much on that. That was a fairly robust consent calendar.
Yes, it was.
And I just want to acknowledge item 9A. For the folks that are sitting, I know that you're here on that item, so we did just approve the funding for the repairs and maintenance of the flood wall. I want to make sure you didn't miss that, since we went through it fairly quickly. So you're welcome to stay all night if you'd like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up, I don't know, they may want to stay, Mark. We have a presentation from PG&E on clean energy options, and PG&E's energy production portfolio, and PG&E infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll just state this, I'm a little under the weather, so if I dip into a sort of Barry White kind of a tone, that's why. My name is Mark Van Gorder. I'm with Pacific Gas and Electric's Government Relations, and we were asked to come tonight and make a presentation about Pacific Gas and Electric, what it is that we're doing locally, how we show up in what we call the North Bay Division. I'll say briefly, and I'm going to introduce a couple of people who may speak a little bit more about it. North Bay Division is primarily Marin County, Napa County, and then pieces of Benicia and Vallejo, and that creates the North Bay Division. Dave Candy, who's going to come up and speak in just a minute, is our Division Leadership Team Manager, is our senior manager, and he'll talk more about what do we do in the North Bay, how many employees do we have, who do we serve, and how do we show up. Joe Herr is also here, and he'll be talking a little bit more about what we're doing as far as our energy portfolio, and answer any questions. We have roughly a 15-minute presentation. Our thought was to go through the presentation, present the information, and come back to any slides that you, you know, any particular questions or slides that you may have. I'll just say, so that it's clear for the council members and for the public, because it's a little difficult to understand at times, we're here for no other reason than to answer questions about what it is that Pacific Gas and Electric does. Some folks have asked questions, well, you know, are you here to give a comparison to others, or, you know, talk about, you know, what the benefits are, what the pros and cons are? That is not why we're here. We are not allowed to have that kind of discussion, nor do we intend or want to. But we do want to provide council with information about what it is that we're doing in the community, and what we're doing with our energy generation and our portfolio, so. With that, I will turn it over to Dave Candy, and he will then turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and others. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I will try to be very brief, because the real star of the show is Joe, and I think you'll want to hear from him. As Mark mentioned, we're looking to keep things to about 15 to 20 minutes to leave some time for questions. Both Joe and I could probably spend about an hour on each of our slides, so if at any point we're starting to run low on time, and you've got questions, just give us the high sign, and we'll give a brief overview of the remaining slides and open it up for questions. So if we could go to the first slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit about PG&E in North Bay and what we're doing from what we call a local presence perspective. But first, I wanted to talk a little bit about our history from an energy conservation perspective. We have a long and very rich history, 40 or so years of providing energy efficiency to most of Northern and Central California, and we're very proud that we've connected over 200,000 solar customers to the grid, both homes and businesses. Since 2010, we've paid out more than $750 million in rebates, that's energy efficiency rebates, and we have more than 57,000 electric vehicles registered through the end of 2014, and that number is increasing rapidly, and we're very, very happy and excited about that. And then lastly, one thing that we're very proud of is that our energy portfolio, that is our generation mix, both what we generate and what we procure, is over 55% greenhouse gas-free. And Joe will go into a little bit more detail about the renewable portfolio and other aspects, but that's something that we're very, very proud of. Next slide, please. So, North Bay, North Bay Division, when I think of North Bay, and what many of our customers do, they often think of Marin, Napa, and Sonoma. We do things a little bit differently, and the reason for that is not just to be different, but the reason this division looks so funky, and they don't all look quite so funky, is based on the distribution, the electric distribution grid, and I have a slide next that shows that a little bit. So really, the shape of that division is about how we deploy, how we transmit and distribute electricity, and then how we respond, how we maintain and respond in emergencies to maintain it. Highly customer-focused as a company. I joined the company almost 10 years ago. Already, we're making this shift towards being extremely customer-centric, and I've been really proud to be a part of that over the last 10 years. Our focus is safe, reliable, affordable, and clean, so we're customer-focused, we're reliability-focused, and that reliability really comes down to ensuring that the energy, both gas and electric, that we provide to our customers, is able to get to them effectively and efficiently, and as close to 100% of the time as possible. Of course, sometimes storms get in the way of that. We've got a very strong community focus. One of my charges is to bring our local leaders together to make sure that what we're doing internally is as efficient as possible, so that we can do all of these things efficiently and effectively, and ultimately so that we can serve our customers better. Another part of that is making sure that we're really being responsive to the communities in which we live and work. And one of the great things that we do, both from a volunteerism perspective and then from a community engagement perspective, is we've got a very strong, both local and corporate, focus on community giving. And last, but certainly not least, our safety focus. We, in 2014, conducted over 18 public safety workshops. We've done work directly with both police and fire, and are growing that effort almost every day, and very, very proud of that work and that partnership with our local first responders. Next slide, please. So this has a couple layers. So we'll start with sort of what I would call kind of the old grid, the legacy grid. This is largely centrally generated, transmitted over wires into distribution substations, which then bring the electricity down to a lower voltage, where it goes out to poles, into transformers, and then ultimately into homes. Over the course of the last, I'd say, 10, 15, 20 years, this picture is becoming more complex. If we could go to the next. We now have large utility scale, primarily wind and solar. There's also biogas and some other renewables, but the large part of our utility scale renewable portfolio is largely solar and wind. Next slide, please. We also, as I mentioned, have distributed generation and more and more often plug-in electric vehicles, and then I believe we have one more, which is really an exciting next evolution, both at the distributed and utility scale storage. So this is a really important part of how ultimately we'll go from the 27 or so percent renewable portfolio that we have today to 33 to 50, ensuring that we're able to integrate those renewables in a way that, again, maintains that reliability, so that when the sun's not shining, customers are still able to use electricity. I want to talk briefly about economic impact. So one of the things that we're really proud of as a company is that we live and work in the communities that we serve, so we have roughly 425, pushing about 450 employees, as well as retirees who live throughout the North Bay. So again, that's Marin, Napa, and Vallejo and Benicia. Our economic impact, we have a significant local spend, as you can see on the slide, pay franchise fees and property taxes that are significant. And then we always like to talk about the importance of energy efficiency from an economic generator perspective. So, you know, the definition of efficiency is being able to do the same or more with the same or less, and part of what we're doing with our residential, and especially business customers, is allow them to continue to be economically viable, and have less of that spend come out of, less of their energy spend come out of their bottom line. Next slide. So this is where I get to turn it over to, again, the star of our show, so Joe will talk, you'll see some familiar facts and figures on here, but he'll go into a little bit more depth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Joe Herr with PG&E, and I don't know about STAR, but we'll see what we can do here. So Dave set this up nicely here, and let's start on the third bullet down, 33% RPS by 2020, signed by Governor Brown in 2011. So we've heard about 33%. Where are we today, right? Today, as the end of 2014, we're at 27%, and that's eligible renewables under the California definition, right? So that's a lot of words, but it's specific and it's important, because these targets, the 33% and then the 50%, just refers to California's definition of renewables that's eligible for the renewable portfolio standard, which is what has been making headlines for good reason over the last couple of months. PG&E recently took a leadership position on the governor's push for a 50% RPS by 2030, and actually made his way to Washington with a number of business leaders, and was recognized by President Obama last month in a lead-up to Paris, and is actually our CEO, and a couple of key leaders are in Paris now. So this topic is well timed for your council meeting, so nicely done. Thank you for coordinating with Paris and the UN. And, you know, I'm personally proud of this. I came from the climate planning world, and interestingly, you know, to me at least, maybe not to you, but I actually had responsibilities for delivering the US inventory of greenhouse gas emissions to that same body, the UN, that's meeting in Paris. And they're having their 21st conference. When I was working on that, they were doing their 11th. And there's been a significant amount of progress, and many in the movement would argue not enough, but it's important to note that California and PG&E within California is being recognized globally for their movement, and a lot of this hinges on the 50% bill that was just signed in the state that I think we should all be proud of here. So, next slide. I'm going to unpack how we get to that 50% RPS, and then a much higher GHG-free number that results out of that 50% RPS in part. So it starts with a portfolio of customer programs and incentives, and please do not even try, you're going to hurt your eyes if you try to read this slide, it breaks PowerPoint 101 rules, but I just want to point out that we have a wide array of energy efficiency, demand response, and distributed generation programs and incentives. We have an active self-generation incentive program for our customers that span generating technologies, including and including energy storage, which is a very popular and important topic, both on the utility side and on the customer side of the meter today. And our energy efficiency and demand response programs are incredibly important to lower the cost of energy for our customers, and do this in a way that's the lowest cost to society. So, next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit here about the renewables options, and try to demystify a little bit about how does a utility like PG&E meet that RPS target of 50% that we read about in the news so much, and how is that different than, say, rooftop, for example, and stuff on the customer side of the meter, generators on the customer side? So, orange bars on the top of that little meter are customer side of the meter programs. There are a number of them and have been. PG&E's been a big supporter, and I'm going to show you in the next slide what that has amounted towards, but there's a number of programs on the customer side of the meter for customer-side generation. The blue bars are three programs where the utility runs competitive solicitations. So it goes out to the market and says, hey, third-party, in a competitive environment, provide us a bid so that PG&E can buy the renewable power, be it wind or solar, and that's what counts towards the 50%. That make sense? So, next slide. So the retail solar growth, again, this is customer side of the, this is those orange bars on the top of the last slide. PG&E has more solar of this form than any other utility in the United States. So one in four of US rooftops that have solar on them are in PG&E service territory. That's 200,000 solar customers and counting, and, you know, one of the key things in this industry that has been a focus globally has been interconnection times, and so PG&E's really been focused on this, and so the national average is a four-week interconnection time, and in PG&E, it's now less than five days, and there are goals on the table to get it down to one day, and there's even talk of almost instantaneous approvals from PG&E's process in the future. So, we're already well ahead of the national average at five days. I'm getting solar on my house right now, and I'm really, really proud that PG&E is not the bottleneck, and I'm happy to say that the solar companies are busy, and they're, I just hope they get it done before we have a lot of rain coming in. So, next slide, please. We are also, within California, we should all be proud, top, number one on the top 10 solar states, period. And it's worth noting the stat that California installed more solar in 2014 than the entire country did from 1970 to 2011. There has really been a massive expansion of solar in the state. Next slide. So again, I'm not going to spend much time on this, but I wanted to show you the map. This is the utility scale solar procurement. So we buy from the market, utility scale solar, and the dots on the map are where those resources are. So they're mostly in the state of California, and they're well dispersed, and as Dave mentioned, they're mostly solar and wind. Next slide. And this is another form of utility scale solar procurement. This is through a feed-in tariff program. You might have heard of those. PG&E has one for relatively large projects, smaller than the ones I showed you in the last slide. Again, the dots on the map, almost all of these contracts are within the state of California. I think I'm actually showing a map that shows all of them in the state of California. Next slide. So what does this mean in terms of renewable portfolio progress? I'm going to speed up to the end here, but I'm about to bottom-line this in terms of where we are in RPS, and then in terms of power mix and GHG content of the power mix, because I understand that's one of the driving thrusts of your interest for this presentation. So, looking in 2014, the middle pie is 27% eligible renewables in the state of California, where we are today. I think it's interesting to note, as we move to 2020, right, the goal is 33% by 2020. We are projecting to be at about 37% by 2020, so ahead of the goal, and you see a big increase in solar. So a lot of the increase is going to come from solar and some from wind as well. Actually, that's not showing an increase from wind, but most of the increase is going to be from solar. And, next slide, please. So in terms of PG&E's power mix, the net result of all this activity on the customer side, demand-side programs, utility scale procurement from 33% going to 50% by 2030, today we're at 55% GHG-free. And we're not projecting where our GHG content is going to be in 2030, but we're at 27% eligible renewables now, and 55% GHG-free now. We're going to 50% renewables. We expect the GHG content to be quite a bit higher, GHG-free content to be quite a bit higher, which I'm proud of. And then benchmarking, please, no, that was a well-timed transition, thank you. You can see the darker blue bars are PG&E's emissions rate, measured in CO2 per megawatt hour delivered. So how much CO2 for every unit of energy are you delivering? That's what this shows. The dark bars are PG&E's emissions rate, how many emissions come out of our delivered energy. And in 2013, we're at 427 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour, and that compares to about 1,200 for the US average. So we're 65% below the US average and quite a bit below the California average. Next slide. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dave.
Did he know that?
Why don't you stick around, because we're close to the end, and then whatever questions we can tag to him. So, the grid of things, you've heard of the Internet of Things, and hopefully you've even started to hear about the grid of things. This is how we see the future of the importance of the grid, and in fact, a growing importance of the grid in the future as we interconnect more renewables, as we have more electric vehicles come online, and as we continue to work with customers on energy efficiency and demand response programs. So this is really how we see the next 5, 10, 15, and even 50 years of the grid, and the importance of our continued maintenance of it, and automated investment in it. So, next slide. Back one real quick. So this is just a slide of the electric vehicle adoption. I mentioned the number of 57,000 towards the beginning of the presentation. This gives a sense of how rapidly we're getting to that number, and the trajectory is only getting steeper. So we're working on helping to grow the infrastructure, the electric vehicle charging infrastructure, to ensure that we're able to meet or keep up with that demand, so that customers can continue to invest in electric vehicles and continue to adopt. Next slide. So coming shortly after the first of the year, we're going to be offering what we refer to as a green option, and there's two different components to that. One is for PG&E bundled electric customers to participate in either 50 or 100% of usage from solar projects, and the other is to invest in incremental new solar projects that will occur within our service territory, and those are coming soon, and as they're getting closer to rolling out, we'll make sure you have information about those. Next slide. That is it. So thank you very much, and we're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. And I'll just, before I ask questions, I'll explain that I was part of the reason that you're all here tonight, and spoke with the town manager about some of the offerings and options that are available to our residents. We have a Go Green team that is looking for different options and solutions to some of the state mandated GHG reductions and that type of thing, so we're trying to educate our residents as much as possible, all the options, and as Mark mentioned, you're not able to talk about other alternatives out there, but I think I can, that we have been approached by other alternatives, and so we wanted to add this to the information that is being shared with all of the public. So, thank you for bringing that information to us. Questions from council? Councilmember Mueller?
Hi. Thank you very much. Yes, I do have some questions. First, I think it was Dave said in early, first of all, can we get those slides?
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay, great, we can look at them later. Okay, really early on, it said the PG&E generates and procures 55% green energy. And the reason I'm asking this, because there's a lot of terms, there's a lot of definitions, and I'm going to want some clarity there, and then the state definitions about what's green and what all this means, and, you know, the RPSs and stuff. So you generate and you procure, which means you buy, so 55...
Greenhouse gas-free.
Okay, so 55% of your total energy?
Energy mix, yes. And that's made up of the 27% or so under the RPS, which is solar, wind, small hydro.
Which fits the definition based on the California public utility...
And then, yep, and it also includes large hydro, which does not count under the renewable portfolio standard.
Although it is greenhouse gas-free, correct?
It is 100% greenhouse gas-free, yeah.
Just doesn't fit the definition, that's probably another long story. Okay, so you are 55% greenhouse gas...
Correct.
All right. Okay, now I got that. So here's, and as the mayor said, you may or may not be able to talk about stuff, but I can ask questions, and if you can't answer it, that's fine. Okay, so I'm going to compare PG&E with maybe one of our, you know, people who's talking. Okay, so I'm going to compare PG&E with maybe one of our, you know, people who's talking to us. So I'm trying to get apples to apples here. So I look on your website, and it says that, you know, you can verify the number, I think that might even be a little low, I think it's 50 percent, or maybe it is 55 on your website, but it's about that. And then the comparator says, oh, no, it's only 20. We can come back to that in a minute. Then I look on the comparator's website, and they go, well, we have 50, you know, so it's like, who's right here? I'm trying to figure that out. So I dive a little deeper, like, how do they account for all this stuff? So then I start, we, and some, I think, Mark, you mentioned the word bundled. So when you procure stuff, you can buy it bundled, which, tell me if I'm wrong, that means you're buying the energy and you're buying the piece of paper. I equate it kind of like an organic apple with that little sticker on it. So you get both. Then, but you can also buy unbundled, which means you just get the sticker and a non-organic apple. So you're 55 percent, how much is bundled and how much is unbundled? So how, I'm trying to get at how much is real green.
Go for it, yeah.
All right.
I was going to take a crack and have to keep me honest, but you're good.
Everybody can crack at it, because that's, and if I'm off-base and not, this is how I'm trying to look at things.
Yeah, so the, so a couple, couple things, and then Joe will either slap me or also jump in. But, so the 55 percent is greenhouse gas-free. We talked about that already. The bundling, we talk about it as a bundled customer, that's the, the generation, so a brief, over, when you look at your PG&E bill, there's the generation piece of that, which is a pass-through cost, we, we make no money on that. And then there's another, number of other line items on there. The two most meaningful ones are transmission and distribution charges. And those are the charges that regardless of who procures your energy for you, are going to be on your bill and why you remain a PG&E customer. The bundling is the combination of all those things together. That's the bundling we're talking about here.
So it has nothing to do with, I think Mark wants to take a crack at it here.
Joe, just for the record, that's okay, that's okay.
I keep switching glasses back.
The one sitting down on the back.
Well, I have my reading glasses and my far-side glasses on back.
No, I, I don't even remember my own name sometimes, so that's fine.
All right, Joe.
So, up one more. There we go. So the, Dave's absolutely right about the definition of a bundled PG&E customer, and there's an additional definition of bundled, where you're, I think you might be referring to, in this case, the RECs, the Renewable Energy Credit, that's associated with the physical power. So there's the physical power, and then there's the green attribute.
Right.
And so are you asking how much of our delivered portfolio is bundled versus separated RECs from the physical delivery?
Right, because I'm trying to assess.
Exactly.
How much is green, really green, not green plus brown, just because you bought a piece of paper?
Right.
Of your 55 percent.
Exactly, because not all RECs are created equal. So a couple of things. First, when we say GHG-free, right, we're talking about the green band, the green halo around large hydro, nuclear, and renewable, ineligible renewable under the California definition. So what comes with RECs is 100 percent of the renewable 27 percent. And when I say RECs, I mean category-one bundled.
So it's real energy with a real certificate.
100 percent of that is bundled with the, renewable attribute comes with the physically delivered power.
Okay.
Right? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And the other two wedges that make up the rest of that green halo are GHG-free by the nature of the power that's delivered.
So...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
But they're not touched by any, it's not that they don't have RECs associated, it's just not part of the market that recognizes those resources. Does that make sense?
Right.
So...
So...
Because they're not eligible under the California definition of renewables.
Because somehow they don't, like, nuclear, even though it's greenhouse gas-free, we won't get into that.
Right, which is why we make the distinction, right? So...
So you truly, your 55 percent that you're saying is, is real green energy and is certified with, you know, with the REC?
So it's greenhouse, 55 percent is greenhouse gas-free. So when you do carbon accounting, if you're a local government and you do carbon accounting, say you lose, you might have heard of an ICLI tool.
Oh, yes.
Right?
We use that for our inventories, yeah.
Right? And so they, that comes with a local protocol for calculating. It's an accounting standard for calculating the greenhouse gas emissions, right? In those accounting standards, they will specify what's greenhouse gas-free and what's not. And under those accounting standards, you will find a 55 percent GHG-free power mix from PG&E, or you should, right?
We did, yeah.
If, if it's, if, if it's use, if and under that local accounting, you're using just the eligible renewable portion under California's definition, you're not, you're not giving yourself enough credit for your delivered power mix from PG&E in terms of GHG-free. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. So 55 percent, so that's, that's a true, real number that is real energy and a real REC that goes along with it. So then I could lay, look to a competitor's website, and they say that, for our mistake, that they have 50 percent. But then I start reading news articles, and they say, wow, theirs isn't really 50 percent because about half of it is, are these unbundled RECs. So they're saying that unbundled REC is just that piece of paper. So it's just like the little sticker, but you have an inorganic apple. But, so you don't have any of those, right?
So I can't respond to the first part of your question. I can respond to the last phrase, which was, you don't have any...
Unbundled REC.
Unbundled REC, okay.
With you guys.
Right, that is correct.
So how do I go about...
We don't have any unbundled REC.
If, how do I go about finding out, if I want to look at my competitors so I can compare everybody in the end? Finding out if they have these unbundled RECs so that I can truly compare PG&E to company A, to company B, to company C? How, can you answer that question?
You know, again, I, I, I'm not in a position to advise you on how to evaluate another entities.
And I'm just saying, how do I determine?
Is that a PG&E question?
But you can ask. You, you, you can ask, you can, like, the way you asked me, you could ask any entity, are you providing bundled, some folks call them tier-one or category-one RECs? Part of the confusion, I think, is worth explaining here, is that any delivered power, for example, we are, Dave mentioned that we're launching a renewable choice program, where folks are going to be able to elect on their bill incremental steel-in-the-ground solar built. So that's new solar going to be built in California. And so there are RECs associated with that power as there are RECs associated with any physically delivered renewable resource that's developed, right? The difference is, in our program, for example, when we develop that new renewable resource on behalf of the customer, we retire with a third-party, the green attribute associated with that power. Does that make sense? So it can't be sold to someone else.
Right, so it's not one of the tradable RECs.
Or double-counted, right. It's retired on behalf of the customer. So when the customer buys it, if that individual customer or business has their own greenhouse gas emissions inventory, they can be confident that that renewable resource was additional, which is the key word in carbon accounting terms, it was additional to meeting their carbon goals.
If somebody could have a wind farm, and they could have RECs, you could be buying their energy, but they could be selling their REC to somebody else.
So what, the way that market works is, yeah, exactly. For example, you would buy a, a REC, you could, you know, if you're a corporation in the state today, there's innovative instruments coming out where corporations can buy the green attribute and, from a third-party developer who might own and operate the asset, and then sell the brown power into the market. It's called brown power, sold into the open market. So the buyers on that market are buying brown power, and the corporation in the state would be buying the green attribute, yeah.
So before you keep going, I want to make sure we drill this down to what pertains specifically to our residents, and not necessarily trying to figure out the global energy delivery thing. So if you could more specifically target your questions to that, because I think some of this is, is 30,000-foot level that our public is probably, you know, glazing over.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, when ultimately I have to make this decision, is that the right parameter to look at? Because I can look at it for you in terms of, you know, the 55 percent, but do I need to break it down so I really know what's truly green? Or do I just take everybody at their face value about what they say is green? So that's how I'm trying to figure it out for everybody.
The answer to that is all stats can be manipulated to be whatever message you want in some degree.
I think one of the, one of the things, and I've talked with the town manager about this a little bit, you have a Go Green team, and I think they're focused on, you know, figuring out and achieving the, last I read was the 20 percent reduction below, 20 percent reduction below 2010 by 2020. So in five years, you know, you want to get to that target. And not to stifle the conversation or, or close it down, but I, what I would say is that, you know, tonight is the start of this conversation, and we can come back and, and answer additional questions. If those are maybe more, more Go Green questions, we can provide answers or, or meet with the Go Green team. So I just want to make sure that you, you know that this isn't a one-time deal. We can continue to have this ongoing discussion, how PG&E can, can work with the team to achieve those goals and answer those questions. So again, not to, not to shut down the conversation, but we hadn't mentioned it yet. I just want to make sure that it was clear that we had talked about the dialogue continuing with the Go Green team as needed.
Okay.
And just to quickly, not to pile on, but we do have, one of, one of the offerings we have and resources we have is what we call a community energy manager, who, to Mark's point around your greenhouse gas goals, could work directly with the Green Team or whomever you designate to determine where you're at relative to that goal and what kind of programs and offerings we could, we could provide to help get you there. So just, just another thing we can offer.
And I'm going to direct a little bit more, again, like I said earlier, about why we even invited you to come and make this presentation, is we have a couple of projects in town, one in particular that has sat idle for, and this is not necessarily your, your team, but it sat idle for about four months after, you know, we got vaults, you know, the streets were torn up and vaults were covered up, and we didn't see a crew back for literally four months. And so we get questions from residents saying, what are they doing and why, and where are they? And so one of the things that I wanted to find out from you tonight is, you're talking about advancements in other energy sources and deliverable infrastructure. So we're making decisions at a very high price tag, and you are doing some at your own price tag, where we're tearing up our streets and putting in utility infrastructure. And how long does that have a lifespan if you are going away from that power delivery system? Or will you always need the infrastructure that is going in the ground and on poles, no matter what the energy source is?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me take a crack at it and tell me how close I get. So first, you know, you, you always have Mark as a resource, but I'm another resource for you locally, so if you have a project, a plate sitting on the street for four months or something that's causing you a concern from how we're showing up in the community, I, I want to hear about that so that we can do a better job or at least tell you what, at least, at the very least, tell you why that's happening, but in general, do better than doing that at all. With, with that said, depending on what the type of project was, for example, if it was natural, if it's our natural gas system, so either transmission or distribution, the lifespan depending on, on the asset is 30, 40, 50 years, and we expect to be delivering natural gas for at least that long. When it comes from, to the electric infrastructure, we prioritize projects based on a couple of things relative to maintenance. First is around reliability. So depending on how long a pole or a conductor has been in the air, it, it might be time to, to replace it relative to it failing, and that, again, is going to have a 30-plus-year lifespan. And again, given that we expect the grid to be here for a long time, there's very little risk if that's going to be an investment made in vain. There are some other additional things that we invest in relative to automating the grid and moving from a centralized, one-way flow grid to a two-way flow, more renewably integrated grid. So not only the utility scale renewables, which are intermittent, but essentially still in that old model of, of, from centralized to residential and, and business customers, to one where power is flowing in and out of homes and businesses on a regular basis and ensuring that the voltage levels stay and, and that grid can remain reliable. And those, those investments are also critically important to a, to a increasingly greenhouse gas-free grid and one that has renewables integrated. So did that get it?
Yeah, it did at least to a degree. And then the other thing that has been a little bit confusing to some folks is the fact that if, you know, as Councilmember Mueller alluded to, certain jurisdictions are opting for other energy sources. That doesn't eliminate the infrastructure that PG&E has to deliver that energy, that we might be looking at having multiple partners to get to the same goal instead of having a single partner, PG&E, delivering the whole package. Is that...
That's right. So it goes back to what I mentioned on the bill. If we're, if we're talking about a CCA, for example, in the case of a CCA, they would be providing that, that generation line item on the bill. The T and D items on the bill would still be ours, and those are to support paying for the maintenance, emergency response, everything else that goes into maintaining the grid.
Right, and I think that's a long story that we're trying to make sure that is communicated, is you're really talking about the energy provision is one component. All of what people know at their service, the system still retains PG&E, PG&E is responsible. And I think that's what we want to make sure that part of that messaging is, is that that's not going away. If, if there is an alternative energy purchasing, it's really, we're just, that's, that's that element. Because right now, as you mentioned, that's not an area that, you know, you provided in these ways, and in some cases PG&E is actually purchasing it. So I took a long way to get there, which is what I was trying to say in a real simple. But I will take advantage of your offer, and as Mark already saw on that. So we, we will brief you on a project. That's, that's not gone as well as we all would have hoped. But I think this is helpful to, to set a, a stage here for us having a good, a good quality conversation so that we understand some of those nuances that are associated with it.
I want to still invite council for any additional questions. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, as Richard Hall and I are co-chairs of the Go Green team, so we would very much appreciate you coming and presenting this kind of information about the power mix and to the Go Green team, because we are making recommendations for our clean, our Clean Air Energy Package, Clean Air Act?
Climate Action.
Climate Action Plan. I knew it was there somewhere. But anyway, early in the year, so we'd appreciate you coming and talking with us before we do, we're going to do a big outreach to the whole community once we're through this process. But we would really like to invite you to come back and talk to, directly to the Go Green team.
Be happy to do that. And that, that community energy manager I, I mentioned is someone we want to bring along. Their, you know, primary responsibility is around supporting local governments on climate action planning, so happy to do that.
Vice Mayor, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, sounds like it should be as simple as just turning on the light switch, and the light comes on. And I think, you know, you've presented some information tonight that, not just for myself, is informative and enlightening, and certainly Councilmember Mueller knows clearly a lot about energy, and she does, she's a scientist, so she knows all this stuff. But what I found very interesting is that, you know, towards the end of your presentation, you guys suggested that in the very near future, you're going to be having green options as well. I think this community has been extremely, I think we've taken a very serious sort of approach and, and interest in being more green with everything that we've done in the town. And you can look around at the light poles and all the types of things that we're trying to accomplish within the municipality itself and the enterprise itself, and the actions we're taking, methane, recapture, recycling all of our water. I mean, these are the kinds of things that are very interesting and important to us as a community. And so this kind of outreach and information, but also then allaying potential concerns or fears that people might have, that if we were to make a, a purchasing decision from a different enterprise or a CCA, that we're still going to have the power delivered, that PG&E, who is still going to be the transmission line and the distributor of that, is actually going to be here regardless of where we make that decision in the long term. And I'm not saying that that's the decision we make, but we're trying to be more informed about how we take action and what we can do to be as green as possible. And so, again, I applaud all of you for, for your comments and PG&E's support of what it's done in the, the last, I mean, 40 years. But, but certainly, there's a lot more that we all can do. And it's this kind of messaging that needs to get out to this community, not just Yountville, the North Bay, or whatever your small, weird section is, but the rest of the state, and frankly, the rest of the, the rest of the contiguous 48 and maybe the other 50. But I appreciate your information tonight.
And you may be aware that several of the municipalities in Napa County have opted for alternative energy sources. And so it's a very, you know, we talked about the timing with the Paris Summit right now, but this is a very... but this is a very hot topic for our entire valley. And so this is really meant to educate us more, as simple as that, that the mystery of energy delivery, we all just, as the Vice Mayor said, it's kind of magic, right? Until we start to challenge what that normal baseline level of delivery means, and what do, what do the numbers mean on the bill? And are these options, as, as Councilmember Mueller was asking, are these options legitimate? Which ones are being fairly compared to each other? And so it's really an education for us before we have to make any decisions, as well as the residents, so they can understand this whole process. It's, it's very simple in one way, and it's very complicated in many other ways. But I also appreciate, you know, Mark, having his perspective, having been on the Napa City Council and being very aware of, of that dynamic that we have about needing to be able to respond to our, you know, our constituents' concerns. I appreciate how quickly we were able to get all of you here, because we've only really been talking about this presentation for a few weeks now. So thank you for also providing that. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I just wanted to add one last thing, and that is that I am proud that our town, under the mayor's, or over the mayor's signature, is one of the very few municipalities that sent a letter to Paris pledging to support the reduction in greenhouse gases.
I wanted to hand-deliver that, but I was not invited.
It was not in the approved budget.
Yeah, the compact of mayors, yes.
It's been all about local action over the last decade in this country.
Was there any, anything else you had for us? Or, I mean, you gave us quite a bit of information already.
We appreciate the opportunity, and like Mark said, we hope this is the beginning of an ongoing dialogue. So look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep. We will take advantage of your offer, not to stamp the rest of the vote.
No, that wasn't offered to you, Mark. Yeah. But thank you guys very much.
Excellent.
We're going to move on. We have three public hearings before us. We're going to go to the first one, an introduction of, it says here, Sandra. I decided not to read the whole thing.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we are presenting you a proposed new chapter of the zoning ordinance that would be entitled Prohibited Uses. And as you know, our zoning ordinance is structured as a permissive zoning ordinance, which means that all those uses, which are not listed as allowed, are prohibited, are permitted, are prohibited. And it's not explicit as to all the uses that aren't allowed, because there's just simply too many to list. And our ordinance does, under the permissive standard, prohibit short-term vacation rentals. And this is expressed through the definitions of dwelling units, dwelling unit, which is intended for long-term occupancy of 30 days, and the definition of motel, hotel, and inn, which is a place for short-term lodging. And in none of the residential zoning districts are hotel-motel uses listed as permitted. So, you know, that recently, we, back in October, we presented some resolutions to you to start a legislative subpoena process against the online listing agencies to determine if homeowners are listing in contravention of our town's ordinances. And at that time, you reaffirmed the, your policy that short-term vacation rentals aren't allowed. So we had a chance to look at the ordinance as it's structured, and we are recommending that this new chapter include a prohibition on short-term rentals. And we're also taking the opportunity to include an explicit provision that all those uses, which are not listed as permitted or allowed, are prohibited unless certain findings can be made that they are similar in kind to, to uses that are allowed. So we are presenting that resolution to you and recommending that you introduce it and waive the first reading.
Thank you. And as part of the formal public hearing, well, first questions of the staff report. Do we have any?
Well, maybe one.
Vice Mayor?
So, thank you. Under the proposed definitions, I just want to make sure I understand it. Under 17 dot 18 dot 010 definitions, we say here, short-term rental unit, and it goes into about the fourth sentence, sleeping purposes for any period less than 30 consecutive days. And I just, I don't know if this is a town attorney question or if it's a question for you, Sandra, and that is, you know, I operate in this business to some extent with property across the valley in multiple facets, because we, the company I work for operates a high-end luxury inn, and we also operate a house that we rent out as an executive home that we rent for 30 days at a minimum. And I just want to make sure that in the language that we presented here, is it a minimum of 30 days that someone has to take on or that someone would have to, that there would be, or is it, are we just saying it's 30 days? Because I, period...
Rentals of 30 days or greater are permitted, and they don't fall within the definition of short-term rental. So as long as it's a longer-term rental, we're trying to prohibit the, the weekend or week-long stays, and that's the, the purpose of that language.
Well, and I know we stayed away from month as a definition, because February has 28 days. And so is that, is that the rationale? From staying away from month, monthly rentals, instead of minimum 30 days?
I think that's a very good reason not to use the word month.
That's what I'm asking.
But this definition was crafted to be consistent with what we understood your existing rule-to-be, but to instead state it in a very clear place where one could just point to one section and say, see, it's not allowed. Whereas currently, the way we interpret your code, you, you currently cannot rent for less than 30 consecutive days. You can make it 45 if you want. You could, you could define it as a month if you want. I don't recommend that, but you could. It's entirely up to you. But this is intended really just to state your existing law in a simpler way, because what we were finding was people were saying, short-term rental, it's not allowed. Are you sure? Where does it say that? And it takes a full three or four sentences to explain it. It's true, it's not allowed, but it's difficult to explain. This allows you to just say, see that section.
Okay.
We've covered it under land use and business licensing. So you have to connect the dots in the two.
Yeah.
And we've actually created a handout that we kind of use, but the idea was, you know, because especially when people are doing online research now, we just want to make it real simple. Our intent's real simple. You don't want it to happen, so we're trying to create that real simple clarity.
Okay.
But, but currently, what you've described, renting a, a house for 30 days, would not fall within this definition.
Correct.
It has to be less than 30 consecutive days.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Any other questions? To open the public hearing, if I didn't even remember the public that might want to talk about this item?
Front level in California.
Seeing none? We'll move on to additional consideration by the council. The action requested is introduction and waiving the full reading of this ordinance. So any further discussion or action?
There's just one thing that bothers me, and that is, as someone who has done home exchanges over the years, I've, I've offended at the term "house swapping." But that's just a, that's semantics. Anyway, I'll make a, a motion that we accept ordinance number 15 dash 442 and, and waive the, the first reading. An ordinance of the Town of Yountville adding Chapter 17.18, prohibited uses to the Town of Yountville municipal code.
Second?
And you're welcome to make a recommendation to home exchange if you feel like that term... Because I'm, I'm assuming that in quotes here, that's not a legally defined term, or is it?
It's, it's not. It's intended, though, to capture an idea in, in two words, which might take many more words to explain.
Home exchange?
Home exchange would probably work just as well. Yeah, that, that could easily be done.
Okay. Well, I prefer it.
Let me think. If we make changes, though, to the wording of the ordinance, if there's significant changes, we need to bring it back again. But this may be, this may qualify as a minor change. It's not changing any meaning, it's just the substitution of one word for another. Sorry, I have to think this out, out loud.
That's okay.
I think this is minor enough that you could do it here.
Is it, is it important enough that you have a problem with it as presented?
No, not really. I can accept it as presented.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second on the floor to introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, that passes. Okay. Well, I also failed to close the public hearing prior to that vote, but you all understood what we were doing there. The next public hearing, first reading for title only of this ordinance 15 dash 443, as it relates to marijuana dispensaries and cultivation.
Speaking of things that aren't allowed in the town, this, this particular ordinance is motivated primarily by state law. And as you all likely recall, some time ago, the voters passed the Compassionate Use Act, which in California created a couple of defenses to criminal prosecution of possession or, or cultivation and, and to some degree, selling of marijuana for medical reasons, if you have a recommendation of a physician. Shortly thereafter, there was all kinds of confusion about how to, how to deal with all of the patients, qualified caregivers, and dispensaries and cooperatives and so on. So the state passed the Medical Marijuana Program Act, which created those permits. But that didn't address the business as it's really grown and developed. So the most recent legislative action is the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which is pretty enormous and comprehensive. And without going into too much detail about what it does, it does two things that forced municipalities to act. The first thing it says is that when they get around to issuing the various kinds of licenses, and there are, I think, 17 different kinds of licenses related to marijuana cultivation, processing, testing, distribution, and so on, that'll come around 2018, they think. Any dispensary can get a license to deliver marijuana, but only in places that has, have not expressly prohibited deliveries. So what does that mean? It means that a dispensary in Napa, let's say, can deliver anywhere it wants outside of Napa, as long as that municipality or jurisdiction has not expressly prohibited deliveries. So what's in front of you, the first thing that's in front of you in this ordinance is a prohibition on deliveries. And the assumption here is that because the town has prohibited dispensaries from opening, that it might also want to prohibit deliveries of marijuana within its boundaries. So this would mean that a dispensary in Napa or Vallejo or anywhere else wouldn't be able to deliver anywhere but in, in Yountville, unless, of course, those jurisdictions also banned deliveries. So delivery basically looks like a, a person who works for a dispensary, who takes an order over the phone or the internet and drives it into town and drops it off at somebody's house, collects money and leaves. It could also include much more complicated things, and what people are expecting to see is something more like Uber, where you click a button on an app and somebody brings you a, a bag of marijuana. And, or candy or whatever they make at that dispensary. So that's what that first part of the, of, of local action that's required by the state law. The second part is a little bit more immediate, and that is that the new state law will regulate cultivation, fairly comprehensively, I might add. And the, to back it up just a little bit, everything that has to do with permitting under the new state law requires two licenses, a local license and a state license. For cultivation, if, if the town does not regulate cultivation in an ordinance effective March 1st of 2016, only one license is necessary, the state license, and the state regulations will govern. And that means if the town doesn't have something in place, and that is in effect by March 1st, and of course, because of the way the government code works, you have to adopt it 30 days prior, so that's the end of February, second reading, then, then people could cultivate theoretically within the Yountville town limits using their state license and not need any permission or authority from the town. And so that's maybe the more important part of this ordinance, is that there's something prohibiting cultivation within town limits. Mr. Vice Mayor?
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
That was the end of my talk anyway.
Okay, if it was the end, then, then that's fine. Yeah, question?
I just want to make sure I understand that, because my understanding from the reading of it in a presentation that was given to us, given to me as part of one of the commissions that I sat on as an alternate, was that the cultivation component that you're addressing was specifically related to commercial cultivation and not individual cultivation for people who have medical permits. Is that correct?
Sort of. So an individual, first of all, it's not just commercial, it's cultivation in general.
Okay.
But there is a slight exception for, I believe it's in-home cultivation in a very, very small scale for a licensed primary caregiver or a primary user.
Right.
So the permitting scheme applies to slightly larger issues. That's correct.
Okay.
So there's still a question there, but I believe the problem won't necessarily occur with respect to the town's regulation, because you can still regulate indoor cultivation and outdoor cultivation, even of those primary caregivers. The problem is if you don't have a regulation in effect for the others, you lose that right after March 1st.
You abdicate it to the state effectively.
That's right. But those small ones are exempt from, from even that, that state permitting. That's true.
That was my understanding. I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Unless you want to...
No, he finished his presentation, so you can ask questions of the report.
So I just want to make sure I understand on, on the first, what I believe is the first item that you were presenting, which was on the deliveries?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going to ask a couple of questions. Let's just assume hypothetically, someone in town has a medical, medical necessity where they're using medical marijuana, it's been approved by a doctor. This person cannot drive, maybe we don't want him to drive, but they are going to call the local green pharmacy and order their high potency marijuana that fixes whatever malady they have, that's been approved by the state. We're then saying that it cannot be delivered to this town?
Not by the dispensary. So theoretically, they could send a friend to go pick it up for them, but the dispensary cannot officially deliver it using their own employees or using a, a for-hire service. So yeah, basically, we are saying by this prohibition, a commercial delivery cannot take place.
Okay.
One of the challenges is the creativity of people that would get around, the scenario you're trying to protect opens the door to abuses...
Right.
Well beyond that, of course.
I know. We were asked, you got, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're deliberating and potentially...
Yeah, that's precisely it. A, a, a commercial delivery, but a non-commercial delivery, and by, according to the definition, that would probably include sending a friend to go pick it up for you. That would be probably fine.
That used to be called shoulder tapping.
Well, I do think this is an area that many communities are wrestling with, because in some cases, I think what you identified, Vice Mayor Hall, is there's a legitimate discussion, which is if it's legitimately being used and prescribed, then the, the people are going to get it one way or the other. So some communities are eliminating the cultivation, because they want to address that for a variety of factors, including fragrance, odor, impacts, water usage, and things like that. But many communities are wrestling, including some here in the Napa Valley, on a little more flexibility on delivery, assuming that it is coming. But I think as the, the mayor pointed out, you know, does a, could that delivery go for a non-medicinal purpose? And I think we have that same issue with pharmacies, with pharmaceuticals that may get utilized or are sold for other reasons. But I'm just saying, some communities are, are allowing delivery, some, and, and again, staff took the feedback from our no position, and this is one of those that if the council wanted to do something differently, it's your prerogative to change it on that.
So let me ask a follow-up question to that, and I believe Councilmember Mueller has another question. One of the reasons for the motivation to be all-inclusive, or actually all-exclusive here, is for us to maintain our local control to make a change in the future. That if we don't prohibit all of these things now, we will lose the right to be a part of that process going forward, because the state will then be the sole regulator of these elements. Is that accurate?
No, only with respect to cultivation is that true.
Okay.
So that one, yes. If, the way the law is written today, if we don't have a regulation in place on March 1st, then yes, we do forfeit the ability to thereafter regulate. So a prohibition...
Regulate cultivation.
Cultivation. The rest of it doesn't have that same level of urgency, or adopt something now or forever, hold your peace. The delivery thing can come and go, can be prohibited now and changed later, or not touched now and prohibited later. If you want to look for a deadline on the delivery issue, it's likely going to be 2018 when they start issuing permits and licenses for deliveries. That's not a hard date, that's just when the new Bureau of Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Regulation, is expected to be operational in issuing permits. But you can always change your mind on those issues. It's the cultivation that really needs to be in place. And again, it's, we're looking at a second reading by the end of February is really our hard deadline. The rest of it, though, there's no deadline. We just thought it was good to have the conversation all at once.
Right. Councilor Mueller?
Well, I just wanted to add on to that, because there was a California League of Cities put on a conference, and the mayor and I and some staff attended that teleconference. And that was when, I think we're finished kind of talking about the cultivation, but they specifically did discuss the deliveries and what was really going to be unknown that's coming in the future. And they suggested that as part of your ordinance that you get in place, so that you can deal with local control of the cultivation, is this delivery. And they even use the word, but you have much, many more words to control mobile delivery, because that could take a lot of different forms. I mean, if we don't have this general ban, I mean, we're gonna, you know, somebody can move out the taco truck and, you know, forgive permission, or they don't even need our permission, you know, we can have a mobile dispensary unit right on town property. So that was the genesis of dealing with this right now, and I think that that's also what the California League of Cities, I think there was a couple other attorneys on the phone having this discussion and suggesting what we should put in place for now, that you could always change later, and they really know what you're dealing with. So that's where this kind of came from, just, we didn't just make it up.
Well...
Let's try to keep these two questions of the report for now, and then we can have further discussion.
And I think on this point, I might point out that one of the things we didn't know in preparing this ordinance was exactly this question of whether there'd be nuances to the council's interest in regulation, or whether it was going to be a flat prohibition. And so if, for example, the council is concerned with allowing some kinds of deliveries and not allowing others, that flexibility is certainly there. And if at some point you wanted to really carefully examine which kinds of deliveries you wanted to allow, you wanted to allow an individual delivery to a specific person as opposed to a mobile dispensary, which is a whole 'nother beast, that can be accomplished through careful wording and thought. But at this point, we didn't know exactly where you might want to go with that. So that conversation can still take place in the future. This just sort of preserves the status quo until we sort out exactly what details you might want to address. But all of those problems are solvable.
Right. So specific questions of his presentation, and then we'll have a public hearing and more dialogue. Councilor Dornbeck?
Well, I'm confused, because I also attended a League of California Cities meeting where this was discussed in depth, and I really got the impression that the cultivation piece of it was because they anticipate commercialization of marijuana coming up rather soon, and, but that it didn't, I was under the impression it didn't have an impact on medical marijuana recipients or patients, that they were, they would be allowed to, you know, that they would be allowed to cultivate and grow indoors and in a limited situation. But that they wanted to get this on the books before March, because they didn't want any commercial cultivation. Now, I'm not...
There is an exception for the patients and qualified caregivers for very, very small cultivation amounts. But as I understand it, that's an exemption from the state regulations and the state rules, but you still have authority to prohibit cultivation even by a patient in your town. That authority has been established for quite some time. It's the same reason that you have authority to prohibit someone from making their own heart medicine in their bathtub, just because they have a prescription, and let's be clear, nobody has a prescription for marijuana, they have a recommendation. That means that you're allowed to possess the drug and use the drug, but you can't necessarily manufacture it, or in this case, cultivate it, on your own. There is an exception to these regulations for patients and qualified caregivers, but it doesn't accept them from your rules, your local zoning regulations with respect to cultivation on that scale. So it's, I understand how there is a confusion there. This is, you're right, aimed exactly at large-scale operations, but I do want to be clear that the town still has authority to prohibit even small cultivation within its borders.
And I'm going to get back to the point when we have further discussion, but Vice Mayor, question?
I just have one more question around this item that's being presented to us. So town, the town limits govern, this would follow, this would govern anything within the town limits. Does that include the veterans' home?
As far as I know, it would not, probably.
Even for delivery, because they have to go through town?
That's a good question. I think it might for delivery.
It's, we can do a little bit of research. Typically, I'm going to give an answer this way, which is typically the town is preempted from land use decisions having an effect on state-controlled property. So most things that come through our typical planning and land use jurisdiction, we don't have any control over the state. This is in one of those areas that we may need to reach out in, because it's not exactly, delivery is not exactly land use, so we might have to...
But we are, we are putting it into our land use code. And so in this instance, if we want to, if we want to reach the veterans' home, we may consider also putting it into a prohibition on business practices, a separate section of the code to be safe, because that might reach the veterans' home as well.
But I think what we're also saying is, this begs a question that staff needs your guidance. Because the first thing, this is crafted as a no consistent with all council policy. If there's a potential that delivery, recognizing that there are people that may have a legitimate need for, and a legitimate prescription, and all of those things that go with that, if your interest is to potentially allow appropriate delivery in those cases, if that's your feedback to us, then we can come back and modify that. We need to hear from you on what that direction is.
Before we go any further, because this has gotten far away from questions about the staff report, I'm going to formally open the public hearing. Anybody in the public that would like to comment can do so now. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we can have the kind of dialogue that we're having. I'm more comfortable with it that way. I just wanted to get back to Councilor Dornbeck's point, and my notes from the webinar that was already referenced, AB 243 is the bill that speaks to cultivation. And my notes here, first must obtain a local permit prior to applying for a state license. So that's how that relationship works. There has to be compliance with our local laws before anybody can go get a state license. If we don't have a local law on the books, they skip that and they go straight to the state license, and we have no authority to stop that.
That's true, only with respect to cultivation.
Right. Specifically cultivation. There is no reference in my notes specifically speaking to the ability of a qualified individual that is receiving medical marijuana. I know there was a discussion on that webinar about there being, I believe it was the state license exemption that would allow that, so there would not be a conflict or an inconsistency, but that was not at the local level.
I think what'll end up happening is that if you are, if you want to grow in your backyard for your own personal recommended use, you don't need a state license permit, but you still do need to comply with your local ordinances and zoning codes. So you may not need to go for the whole state level, but you still must comply with local law. It just means that this large licensing system just doesn't apply to you.
Right. So further discussion? I, I'm glad that you made the distinction about the other components not being required to have new specific prohibition, like the cultivation piece, because I was under the impression that all aspects, delivery, cultivation...
Well, delivery, you do have to expressly prohibit, you just don't have a deadline to do it. So the license, the state license for delivery, would be issued to a dispensary outside of town limits, and they would have a license to deliver wherever they want, as long as where they're going doesn't have a prohibition. So you need an express prohibition to keep the delivery guys out of your town.
Well, and if Amazon gets their permission to have drone delivery, that'll be the first thing that you start to do, most likely. I mean, it's a, you know, it's a real possibility.
I suppose it is. But they wouldn't be able to deliver it in jurisdictions that prohibit it.
Vehicle, is what that becomes.
Yeah, and our definition would cover that. You know, a drone carrying a jar of marijuana would definitely be both impressive and covered by our ordinance.
Autonomous vehicles are already on the streets as well, so...
Yes, and that would, it would cover them as well.
Additional discussion? Any further questions, or is there a motion to be had about the, and I'm assuming that your wording on hold first reading by title only is the same thing as saying introduce and waive the reading?
It is, and I apologize for being out of step with your normal wording. That's the way I usually phrase it, and I forgot to check on how you phrase it.
As long as it means the same thing, we're good.
Means exactly the same.
It does, and we will return to our normal language.
Yeah. That was my mistake.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 15-443, an ordinance of the town of Yountville amending, wrong one, this is another prohibitive use. No, this is medical marijuana.
15-443.
This sounds like the other one. An ordinance of the town of Yountville amending chapter 17.18, prohibited uses of the Yountville municipal code, and waive the reading.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor?
I just want, I mean, I, I fully can respect and understand the cultivation component of this. I just have a hard time grasping, in some way, that someone who is infirm in some fashion, that has some legitimate, whatever it is, prescription or otherwise, is not going to be able to have their medicine, the industry you work for, delivered to them because of this ordinance.
Well, I think to your point, if you're basing it on someone who's infirmed, that can't get it, we're, we're not saying that they can't get an agent to deliver that on their behalf. What this does is require that agent to be a legitimate connection to that, that patient.
It's the local street dealer, go pick it up for me and drop it off at my house. I just, I find this strange. I'd rather have a reputable organization that's actually doing it, that's licensed by the state, delivering it.
Do you know if there is a requirement for any kind of certification for someone that's delivering, whether it be medical marijuana or any other drugs, for a patient?
Kind of. It's an indirect issue, but the way it works is that if you are pulled over by CHP and you have marijuana, you have a defense to being prosecuted for possession, only if you are a patient with a valid recommendation or a qualified caregiver. So this patient, hypothetical's patient, patient's caregiver would be the one who could go get it and bring it back. But they can't just ask for a random person to do it. I mean, they could, but that person would be subject to the full penal code violations for possession and transportation of marijuana, possibly even with a commercial intent-to-sell charge.
So what I, what, my interpretation of this language actually protects what I get from your last statement, that you're trying to protect also, which is a legitimate, valid delivery system. That legitimate, valid delivery system, in your hypothetical, is the dispensary. What I'm describing is a qualified caregiver becomes that valid delivery system. It isn't just a buddy or a distant relative that wouldn't qualify as a caregiver. And we have a caregiver ordinance in this county that requires even family members to be background-checked and licensed to give that care, so that there is control over these kind of scenarios, I think.
I think, if I could, I think a little bit what the Vice Mayor is alluding to is that we live in an environment now where a lot of people with legitimate prescriptions, they have mail order, refills and prescriptions, and their delivery, either buy-and-mail delivery, and I think he's just phrasing, you know, maybe that's similar to that, and that's how I sense some of his, it isn't so much that the person can't go get it, because they clearly can, just like any of us with a prescription, can go to the pharmacy, pick up our material, and bring it back. If I'm reading your hesitation a little?
I just, I have a hard time, even with someone who's licensed, if I was in need of my medication, and my licensed private caregiver is not available, but I needed something for pain or, we all know what these issues are that people are using this for, and I got to ask my neighbor to go do it, they have to tell me no.
What if...
Or break the law. And that's what we're asking them to do.
I'm just saying, that's why we mentioned that delivery is a discussion, that, you know, there are places that are working on it, and I think it's a, you know...
There's also the ability that if we find unintended consequences that come into effect based on an ordinance we put in place, we can amend that ordinance.
It just requires another ordinance.
Yep.
As it would if we don't include it, and then we have an unintended consequence, and we'd have to add it.
But I, but I hearken back to the fact that if I drive down to the pharmacy and I say, "I'm picking up medication for Mary Sue, my next-door neighbor," the pharmacist doesn't look at me and tell me, "Well, you're not Mary Sue, you can't take this to her." And if I drive it back to her, I don't go to jail if I get picked up carrying it.
It's because it's not illegal.
It's not illegal if you're doing it for someone who actually needs it, and they have a prescription for it. I'm just happening to do it under this environment that we all live in today, which is a pharmacy, which is, I mean, I, I mean, I'm allowed to have my difference with this, and I recognize and support the cultivation component, I just have difficulty with the delivery.
So there is a motion that's been seconded on the floor. If there is, either we can have a vote on that, or if the motioner and the seconder are open to changing that motion, or if there is a substitute motion that wants to be presented, we have all those options.
Well, I'm not, I'm not certain I know how to prepare a substitute motion, and I'm not certain that I want to delay the control of the cultivation component, given the amount of time that we have, the number of meetings that we have before February, when we have to have a second reading of this ordinance, that I'm prepared to go out on a limb and try to rewrite this thing, and then have to come back to the council. I'm concerned with the timing, because the cultivation is an issue.
So let me make a proposal, if I could. If the motioner and the seconder are willing to withdraw the motion, we can continue to discuss if we wanted to amend the language as it's presented. Are you open to that idea, or not? Because otherwise, we'll have a vote.
Well, I mean, I agree with Vice Mayor Hall, that I, my preference is to move this forward, and then when we want to make changes, we'll do that later. But I would, especially with the cultivation and putting this in place, and if we want to have additional discussions about this and amend it later, that's kind of the process I'd like to take, just because of the temporal sequence of what we have to do regarding cultivation.
I can't dispute that.
Okay.
Can I withdraw my second?
Well, I don't know if she can withdraw it so much as, what I'm going to do is I'm going to offer a substitute motion.
But before we spend a whole lot of time, you have a motion and a second, so one simple thing would be to vote on it and see what goes.
It's not a simple thing, Steve, if we're not sure what the vote's going to mean. And so I'm going to go ahead and make a substitute motion, that we amend, we retain all elements of the first motion, excluding the language related to delivery, the prohibition of delivery.
I'll second.
Hold on, I just want to make sure that, is that sufficient guidance for a motion? Mike?
One more time, please. The motion is...
The substitute motion is to accept all of the language as presented, except for the language relating to prohibition of delivery.
Okay, so to remove the delivery definition and prohibition?
Right.
Is that, to your satisfaction, is being clear? Is that, to your satisfaction, is being clear?
Yes.
I have a question.
So, I need to find out if there's, okay, that's just.
Just, I'm just checking the comments, so everybody else, I was asking, it may only be in this case, you want to leave the definition, but only remove the restriction?
I, I would, I would remove both for cleanliness purposes.
I, I agree with that.
And either way you do it.
I want to remove both references to delivery, and delivery and, the definition and the prohibition of delivery, and all other elements of the proposed ordinance remain. So, that's my substitute motion. I think Councilmember Dornbecker seconded that substitute motion.
Yes.
Is there additional discussion?
So, isn't that a significant change to this? So, we cannot introduce and waive the first reading today?
Right, we would come back with a, a new first reading. I, I mean, you do have time. Like I said, the second reading has to be by the end of February. I think you have three meetings between now and then. It cuts it a little tighter, and as long as we're not trying to necessarily solve the, the delivery problem, which we don't need to, three meetings is enough to get this into place.
I've got jury duty coming up too, so.
I, I think.
Right, you know, we have January second, or fifth, or whatever it is, and then we have a second meeting in January.
You would have your second meeting in January nineteenth, and then thirty days thereafter would be the effective date, which would be approximately March twentieth.
February.
February. And if we had to, we could rely on the first meeting in February, but we're not going to push it that close.
We will make it with this.
That would be March first.
And like I say, this is an okay thing for the council on that.
No, it needs to be in place thirty days before March first.
So, we're fine on our timeline, as long as you take.
So, we can't do February at all, but we have enough meetings in January.
Right.
Okay, so I think that protects us, and if we determine that delivery, the delivery component is an element that we want to add to it, we have that without the time pressure of the cultivation.
Right, and also, again, you know, like I say, we introduced it a comprehensive, and this may be some ideas for us to take a look at where some other communities are doing on delivery and come back with, and follow that, because we're not the only community wrestling with this, to be perfectly honest with you, in terms of where you sat.
So, we have a motion, a substitute motion and a second. Is there additional discussion, or are we ready to vote on that?
I just have one more, why are we taking, what is, I'm just really trying to nail down your real concern, is it because we just really haven't talked about this enough, or?
I'll speak on, on behalf of supporting the Vice Mayor's point on this, is that I see this as a potential unintended consequence of having kind of a overreaching and almost punitive impact on a legitimately authorized user of medical marijuana, which we're not, in my opinion, that's not the intent of this ordinance. So, as it's written, that does happen, and we would need to undo that in the future. If we were, if we were up against the deadline and had no time to re, rewrite this, I would support this as written, and then potentially undo it in the future, but I see us being able to do this more cleanly with the time we have, if that answers your question.
All right, so, so I'm still a little confused about, isn't there perhaps, I thought there was an exception, that if somebody had, I, I think what we just don't really want, a mobile unit showing up in town and saying, look, you know, I can do this, so, is, but didn't you say there was an exception, that if somebody is, and it's not a prescription, as you're right, it's, it's a recommendation, so if somebody has one of those, why would this, which part of this specifically would say you couldn't ask your next-door neighbor to go get it for you?
That's the penal code. This has nothing about asking your neighbor to go pick up marijuana for you. Even if you allow deliveries by dispensaries, your neighbor still can't go pick up marijuana for you and drive it, unless they're a primary caregiver, and because of the penal code prohibitions on, and health and safety code maybe, I can't remember which one it is, it depends on the drug.
Well, it violates federal law, doesn't it?
Well, it, it does, but it also still violates state law. Don't forget, it is still illegal under state law to possess, drive with, sell, dispense marijuana if you aren't a patient or qualified caregiver, or a licensed dispensary, right? So, your neighbor going to pick up the marijuana from a dispensary and bring it back, regardless of the ordinance's wording, or lack of wording, or anything, is always going to be illegal under state law. They're, but they're going to be subject to prosecution by standard law enforcement. This is much more of a, of a, of a civil issue, in fact, it's not a criminal issue at all, it's expressly not a criminal issue. This prohibits the business practice of a business in a neighboring jurisdiction commercially selling within your limits. That's what this would do. And, and what it sounds like the council is interested in doing is maybe allowing some of that, but not others. So, the, delivery, of course, would involve both a one-off delivery from the dispensary, from their licensed delivery person, and it also would include that mobile home van that has, you know, that just is, is a dispensary itself. So, that's maybe where there's shades of gray that we need to address.
I was going to say, it may also be under that approach that we want to make sure that we clarify our prohibition on dispensary to include mobile dispensaries. That, that may be a real simple when we talk about plain English being plain English.
I think arguably, your, your ban on dispensaries frankly does prohibit mobile dispensaries, but you're going to find people who are pushing that, that definition, and, and if you outlaw deliveries in general, then you don't worry about that at all. But, so that's the, where the challenge comes, if you're trying to find a spot in between those two. But I think, to be perfectly honest, your dispensary includes something on wheels. I think that's pretty, pretty plain.
Yeah, it doesn't define it as anything else, brick and mortar.
Right.
So, we have a, a substitute motion and a second on the floor, I'm going to call for the vote on that. All in favor of the substitute motion?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Opposed? So, that's three to one, that passes. Councilmember Mueller was opposed, and that also means the initial motion is moot.
Mm-hmm.
So, the direction that it, that we are following is, we're moving to our next meeting to address the delivery issue. No, we're doing it without, moving this forward without the delivery issue.
Correct, that's right.
For ratification, potentially.
Yes, it will be.
But there will be research going on about the delivery component.
If I could on that, just, we will bring back this ordinance cleaned up with deletion for delivery. We will continue to monitor and work with the league in other cities over the next several months on where's delivery language and what are some people going, and I think that's how we'll approach that, if that's, if that's, if that's the direction of the council.
Right, because I think the core intent of our actions tonight is to put in place language that prohibits cultivation as required by the new state law.
Correct.
And that's the action that we've taken.
And this will meet, your first reading, again, will be now on January fifth, second reading on January nineteenth, which means the effective date will be February twentieth. I'm having a problem with twos today.
Okay, so we're finished with that item? Thank you. And we're going to move ahead to our next public hearing, considering adoption, approving budget adjustments.
And I have to provide one caveat, and I apologize, I completely, this is, this is technically not a public hearing, this is an administrative item that has a resolution, so it should have been, and I missed that when we were playing.
So, how should we handle that, Town Attorney? Does it matter?
Don't hold a public hearing.
So, I won't open it?
You can if you want to, but you certainly don't have to.
Right, it's just.
We're going to go through the same process, anyway.
Okay.
We just have regular.
I mean, we're going to have public comment if it's offered.
Exactly.
I don't think it's ever a problem to have a public hearing when you don't need one, but it is a problem to not have one if you need it.
Right, and the simple clarification there is, a public hearing is formerly fancy public comment, as opposed to regular public comment.
Well, there's noticing as well.
Well, because this was agendized as a public hearing, I'm going to treat it as such.
Okay.
My council's counsel. So, let's start with the staff report on the public hearing item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. Richard Arrow, interim finance director.
You can maybe just pull that mic a little bit closer, and make sure the world can hear you.
There you go, I'm Richard Arrow, interim finance director, and we're here to present to you the final year-end report as of June thirty-two thousand fifteen on the state of the town finances, where we are from a budget perspective, as well as actual revenues and expenditures for the general fund and the other funds that are part of the, the town's budget. So, we prepare, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and I think to, just hit shift to go into the next. Oh, okay, great. All right, so, the main thing that I want to relay to you is that the town is very, very stable financially. As a matter of fact, I've been finance director CFO of many entities, and you guys are to be commended for the way your budgetary controls work, the conservatism of your revenue projections, and living within your budget. It is very, very remarkable of, of seeing what the end of the day, your carryover fund balance is in relation to your operating revenues, it's astonishing to tell you the truth. So, with that being said, we are absolutely continuing the focus of, number one, prioritizing of capital projects, you know, for the town good, funding reserve requirements, not only for the general fund, but for the enterprise activities, water and wastewater funds, and providing your debt service obligations, emergency contingency, and revenue stabilization reserves, which you have set up in the past, and we are going to offer some recommendations on what they ought to be, you know, as of June thirty-two thousand fifteen, as well as our continued annual contribution to OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. This is the healthcare programs that you have for your retired employees. Okay, go ahead and, Julie, all right. So, in terms of the general fund revenue picture, and I'm sure you're all well aware of the big three, okay? When I was, used to be in accounting, working for public accounting, there used to be the big eight, and then became the big six, and now I think it's the final four. But, anyway, the big three for general fund, of course, is the property taxes, sales taxes, and TOT, which is one of the major, major underpinnings of the city's, of the town's financial picture. So, without really, you know, my staff report is very explicit, you know, and very detailed on how things ended up, and I don't need to replay, you know, and reword all the different percentages increases, but the general, at the end of the day, the general fund revenue totals were eight-point-seven percent over budget, okay, which is a, that, that just goes to show you that in the way that the fourteen-fifteen budget was crafted, revenue was conservatively estimated, and I got to tell you how important that is, because every place that I've seen where budget managers try to be less conservative in terms of revenue estimates, at the end of the day, when you're closing out the funds, if you have a shortage of revenue, and it can be considerable, because of over-optimistic projections, that could put the fund balance in a negative position, and I've been in entities that, where that has happened. So, you are in a very, very fine position here of not having to worry about all those type of things. TOT, of course, is holding its own very, very well. I think the town management believes that it, although it is very, very healthy at this point in time, that it very well may plateau out in the near future. And with that being, the, we have had discussions between the town manager and myself about what the next year's budgeting ought to be with TOT, and I believe it is very appropriate to have it leveled out, you know, not anticipate, you know, double-digit increases, or even significant increases, seven to nine percent, but to provide for a cushion of TOT, and augmenting monies going into a revenue stabilization account to provide for a rainy day fund in case there is, you know, a downturn in TOT for whatever reason, or if, if you have a state of emergency, if El Nino happens, and, you know, TOT operators go offline for a period of time, that you're going to have a quote rainy day fund for the El Nino potentiality. The other major revenue producers, i.e. property tax, that's fairly well-known, you know, in terms of what your assessed value is, it's very healthy here in, in Yanville, but one of the things that, and this is part of the budgetary, or the, the setting aside of reserves is all about, is that we found, I found, that the, there was a little bit more optimistic projection of, of property tax revenues, that occurred in fourteen-fifteen, so we are suggesting that we roll down that estimate to about thirty thousand, and as we go forward into this presentation, you'll see where we're setting aside about thirty K to bring down estimated revenues to a more reasonable level, which would include excess ERAF as well, because you can't count on excess ERAF being there day in and day out. I was from Marin County, which was the mother of the excess ERAF issue going on down there, and it all depends on basic aid levels, and whether schools are fully funded at their basic aid, or whether they're less than basic aid, that drives what excess ERAF is all about. Okay, so, going on, parks and rec revenues are holding very much their own, as you'll see on the chart, there was an increase between the different class fees, event fees, excursion fees, that the parks and rec revenue was nine-point-seven percent to the good, and you'll see that repeated through this presentation of the slides, because every revenue category that we looked at in terms of park and rec fees, licenses and permits, rents and concessions, they were all very well estimated, because we brought in more than what we thought we were going to bring in. Okay, I'll try to be brief, because you want to get on with your evening, I understand that. So, getting, let's go to the expenditure side, Julie, oh, we want to talk about wastewater and, and water. It reflects, you know, the five-year water rate schedule, which was built in to the budget, and water, actually, water purchases came in about seven-point-two percent over budget, but it's, as far as the net profitability of the water operations, it was still very fine, you know, and showed a, a net increase, along with wastewater as well. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so, now we come to the modifications to the assigned balance. So, we started our fund balance of, on July first, two thousand fourteen, of four-point-one million dollars. That's not in the slide, but I'm just giving you some explanatory data of what I've compiled, you know, for the actual fiscal year fourteen-fifteen. When you added in all revenue of ten-point-five million, subtracted out seven-point-one million dollars of expenditures and transfers, the ending net fund balance was five-point-six million dollars, which was clearly over the four-point-one, and of course, that resulted because of revenue coming in at a much greater spa, pace, and expenditures coming in at lower than was anticipated, so that's what put the town in such a fine financial position. So, in terms of what we need, Steve and I had talked about, you know, you know, so what are we going to do? How are we going to manage, you know, this revenue, this unanticipated fund balance? And it came into several categories of what we found that we need to continue our operations for fiscal year fifteen-sixteen. Number one was to assign resources for temporary staff in the finance department, and the temporary staff that you're talking temporary staff that you're talking about is blah, and other staff that we had come on board. Margaret, as you probably knew, she was here replacing or backfilling Celia's position when she was out on maternity leave. So, what is in, what we're anticipating is that, well, with the new finance director coming on board in early January, Steve and I felt that it was probably a good idea to have some overlap between the interim finance director, myself, and the new one coming in, because when I came on board on July 4th or 6th, yeah, you know, the former finance director had already been gone, so I was running as fast as I could to catch up on where everything was. So, having that overlap is a good thing, I believe. The other thing that we, that I alluded to earlier, is that we wanted to adjust the overzealous estimate of property tax. Actually, it wasn't overzealous estimate, it was just a plain error, plain and simple. You know, it was about a $30,000 number. Third item was an adjustment to the town attorney's budget of about $30,000 to give the town attorney a greater capacity to do his good work that he's doing for the council, and another $150,000 to establish an appropriation for leave buyout. And what leave buyout means is that if you have people leaving town service or retiring, and they have accumulated vested vacation or holiday pays, and some of these vested amounts can be quite pricey, you know, if someone leaves with, you know, 60 days of, or 90 days or six months of vacation on the books, we wanted to have a pocket to draw from where those things might happen. The other thing we wanted to do is reestablish an appropriation of about $85,000 aid for the community center restoration project. These were previously budgeted appropriations where, at year-end, back in the old days, we could encumber those funds, even though they were not spent into the next year. Under the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they eliminated the idea of encumbrances. So, encumbrances have gone away. So, the only way to really handle those things administratively is to either rebudget them, you know, in the following fiscal year, or make a provision as an assignment of fund balance, which, this is what we're suggesting that we do as of June 30th, to roll those over into the next year, so when the project is completed, we'll have a pot of money to pay for those expenditures.
And in Sam's defense, I just wanna make sure crystal clear for the council and the community, this is not a change in the $800,000 budget, it's the full allocation and appropriation of that budget that you made for the community center repair project.
Yes. Okay. The fourth, the next one is an administrative item, which has to do with reallocating of prior year purchase order appropriations, okay? Kind of the same, along the same line, is that we had about $93,000 worth of POs, you know, that rolled over into the next year. Unfortunately, because there's no encumbrance attached to those POs, the actual appropriation basically got swept up into the general fund. So, when the, oops, when the encumbrance comes over, all right, we need to have a source of money to pay for those things, not out of the current operating budgets for 1516, because that's not when those monies were originally planned to be spent, so we're bringing that over. It's a bookkeeping issue that we're dealing with.
And if I could, in these two areas, I think these are where we had a little bit of, in the finance director transition and the budget adoption, there were some things that staff bought were in the budget, and then we did the final. So, this is just a real cleanup of some of those things, again, staying, all of these are within the project approvals that the council prior had approved with the budget allocation.
Okay. Next to that, the next one is the adjustment to the town clerk budget for interim requirements, and we're estimating $30,000 for backfilling of the town clerk while she's on her leave. And then, finally, the rebudgeting, this is a previous approved budget of the flood wall FEMA grant of $291,000 that we wanna roll over, so that can be utilized in fiscal year 1516 without impacting the 1516 budget.
We anticipate that this, as I indicated to you, will also be offset by the increased grant revenue, but in order for us to move everything forward, so that's your cleanup for this year's adjustments.
We pay for it and get reimbursed by FEMA, is the plan.
Correct.
That is correct.
And this is, this is necessary to fully implement the actions that we indicated in the earlier consent item staff report, so that we'll have budget authorization for the contract you've authorized us to enter into.
And that gets us to the last big number.
Yes. Whoops.
Sorry.
Recommend, oh, that's good, yeah.
Oh, hey.
Keep on going, keep on going.
It's been through there now.
All right. So, all right, next one. All right, this is the, this is the elephant in the room, so to speak. So, after all this is done, and reallocating those additional amounts that we were eliciting in the prior slide, we have unassigned fund balance of $1.5 million. And we, staff is recommending that we place $1 million into enhancements of the capital improvement program for various public works and capital improvement activities. Additionally, we recommend that we assign another $500,000 into the revenue stabilization account, just to bolster those reserves in order to guard us from any unanticipated drops in revenue, or any unanticipated expenditures that are very, very significant that we could draw upon if necessary. So, with that, the town is, council, you're very welcome to accept our recommendations, or modify them, or discuss them, or it's basically a policy decision that you are invited to make.
Thank you. Questions of the report?
I have no questions of the report.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Thank you for the information, and, I mean, I know you came in kind of at the end of the last fiscal year and the beginning of this one, and I know there's a lot of cleanup and work that's gone on, so I appreciate your time and patience with all the information.
Sure.
Just to make sure I got this right, 'cause the one and the two on 1.5, are those numbers in my dissection?
There's, I'll help you math. One of the big adjustments for us is also, we are carrying a $1 million legal contingency at the tail end, and this is including bringing it back down to the 250 that the council authorized. So, your 1.5 is a combination of, in essence, if you remember, $800,000 in increased revenue, and about 750 from reducing the contingency. So, your question is appropriate.
Okay, so then, more directly, on this number that's on the slide here, just to make sure that I'm clear, I see that the number should be 1.521971, and that says 1512. Which one's correct? Is it 21,000 or 12,000?
Oh, 1512.
Or is the other 12,000?
Well, I'm gonna ask that next. I think it's 21, based on...
I think those numbers might be transposed.
The staff report has...
Oh, I see what you're, yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Are they transposed, and which one is correct?
1512971, that's the correct number.
Okay. So, we've, if, if, if we were to take the recommendation of staff, where is the remaining $12,971 gonna go?
Well, the total of the 141 down to the 291, 830, is 851,859.
It would stay in unassigned fund balance.
It's unassigned, yeah, everything...
So, you leave a $12,000?
Yeah, yeah, there's still gonna be money in...
The question is, the million and the 500 don't add up to 1.5?
I did not, we did, we'd done it in prior years, you've rolled some just unassigned fund balance.
It's fine.
So, that's what we did this year, yep.
Okay.
You caught us, we were just doing round-rounding for you.
Yeah, there's 12,971 in unassigned, that's what it is.
This is the problem with being in accounting. Okay, and I understand the nexus of all the fund balances, it's basically, we had better revenues and budgeted, we had lower expenses than anticipated, as presented by yourself and the town manager, largely related to the contingency associated with the legal fund, on the expense side, the revenue was just conservatism. So, what's being proposed here, then, is $500,000 incremental, is that mine? $500,000 incremental revenues or reserves being put into our current revenue stabilization fund, which is, how much?
The current revenue stabilization is 1 million.
Prior to the 500.
Prior to the 500.
So, we would be putting, just for purposes of my understanding, 1.5 million into revenue stabilization.
Correct.
Which is supposed, in theory, to cover the 6.25 million, so it's literally 25%.
Yeah.
Okay. So, my next question is, this, the numbers here, presented here, do not include any of the tax, potential tax impact for property tax associated with the Bartisano transaction?
They don't, and I'm not prepared, we will do that when we have our budget projections, because property tax assessment and collection is deferred by about a year. So, I will probably, in next year's budget, you will see a modest increase. But, before everybody gets too excited on property tax, remember, we only get like 1% of that, so...
I understand, but there's nothing in these numbers, because that transaction...
Nope, these numbers do not reflect that.
...occurred after the fact. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, okay, it takes time for that to occur. And then, my question on expenses, you answered with the attorney clerk. Thank you. Those, that's all I have for now.
All right.
Councilmember Mueller?
As long as we're correcting math, if you're on page eight out of 10 under the water enterprise funds, the variance under revenues is incorrect.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. It's the same as your budget. It's okay.
All right, that's an error. Okay.
Is that your only comment for now?
We're pointing out errors, I think we should point it out.
Sure. I'm trying to make sure I knew which number was right.
Any questions of the report, Councilmember Dornbecker?
No.
And I would just say, the recommendations we're making are basically consistent on your all's prior recommendations, because I do wanna point out that all of your reserve targets are fully funded, all of your claim reserves are funded, so if you wanted to look at different alternatives, but basically, you told us that you would like to have a little more funding in the capital projects fund, so it could potentially do things. Moving your revenue stabilization addresses the more fluid situation, which is, if we have some change in TOT revenue, it's the first pot that we would go to, rather than the emergency reserve. But, again, those are a council prerogative, we certainly respect your decision on those.
And we're going to be drilling down on the allocation of the million dollars in the CIP during our budget discussions, how it's gonna be allocated within that fund.
Right, that's just, if you remember, we put money in, and we keep, basically, the capital projects fund is a bank account for future projects. And what I will tell you, if you look at your five and 10-year projections, we still have more need than funding, so this goes a long way towards improving that ratio, but does not get us there fully.
And another question, you mentioned the water budget being over by 7.2%. I don't remember what page number that was.
That has, that has more to do with the fact that the, member of the state changes, we don't, we never know the actual cost.
I understand, I just wanted an explanation of why, is that the reason?
That's the why.
It's the after-the-fact charge that we get from the state.
We put an estimated number in that was actually a little bit lower, but again, our, you have to remember, when, we basically resell water, so the state charged us a higher rate than we had projected, but most of that is passed back through on the rate payer, but that line item budget...
I was just asking for clarification, because we talk about the significant water conservation effort that we've been having in town, and then to see that the cost is over budget, I just wanted there to be a very clear explanation.
Combination of those factors, that is correct.
Okay. That's, that's it for my questions right now, so thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, because we decided that was a safer way to go. If any members of the public would like to talk about this, seeing none, I'll close it, and we'll get right back to a non-public hearing-type discussion in action. Thoughts from the council on the proposed allocation of funds, which, by the way, is again, a very good discussion to have. Councilmember Dornbecker, actually?
Well, I'm very happy to see the additional $500,000 going into the revenue stabilization fund, I think that's very important. I wonder if a million dollars to the CIP fund, if we do allocate that $1 million to the CIP fund, and we find another need for that, do we, what do we do then? I mean, another portion of that.
You always have the ability on a, on a non-restricted fund, I mean, typically, we move money into the capital projects fund at two points in time, based on current council policy. You've asked me to budget an annual amount at the beginning of the year, so that we book a certain amount, and then you've asked that we kinda look at year-end when we know. So, what I would say is, your capital project fund is sort of like your piggy bank for future infrastructure.
Right.
So, that's how I would phrase this, this is...
There's flexibility through our budget discussions coming up, if necessary.
And just because you have it, you know, like lately, we've been doing, you know, we've had a rather robust...
Yeah.
...infrastructure improvement program, but I'll share with you one thing that's on the list, you know, if we wanna continue a more aggressive utility undergrounding, we need multiple years of a million dollars plus coming back into the CIP to get there. So, this is a fairly conservative place, and ultimately, you all will make the final decision on what, if anything, gets allocated from the capital projects fund balance.
Would this also be an example of using funds for an unanticipated emergency, like the water pipe breakage?
It's a good opportunity, Mayor, council, if I could, as you know, I tend to be very conservative with our projections. So, what you have actually in our reserve funding principles, we have a 240,000 first-level annual contingency. So, that's just, that's the first place we would go. Our second reserve level is what we call the revenue stabilization, and that is, if something were to happen very quickly that affected our revenues, we'd be able to maintain your existing budget and service delivery by drawing into that. That's the fund that I'm recommending, we go from a million to a million and a half. And then, your third level is what we've defined as the emergency reserve, and that is when we really have a more catastrophic situation. So, we're also working on a parallel to bring up utility reserves, because when we talk about water lines and something, what we have here is our goal, and we're not quite as sufficiently strong as I'd like yet, and the water and wastewater would be for those reserve funds to be able to carry a little more of their weight, but the general fund could loan the utility enterprise fund money if we had a major situation. The other thing I wanna make sure that we've also established in your budget reserves, and you saw it in the staff report, we are still carrying a $250,000 legal contingency. So, over the last several years, we've moved up some of our restricted contingencies, and the reason I think it's important that the community knows when we call these, if we don't spend anything from those, we still keep the funds reserved there. So, we, you know, if we draw down a little bit, then we generally replenish them. So, in this case, all of those are fully funded, and we've actually improved our fiscal position by what we would have. So, you have several places to go, should there be an interruption in service or need. And I think a good example also, let's say we were back to the flood wall situation, where that came in and you really wanted to, that would be an example of where we would go to one of those reserves first to address that during the...
Well, there's also a very real situation with 60-plus rooms having just changed ownership in one property, and up to 200 rooms...
I think we need to be...
...in another sale that's pending, that could have an impact on how many rooms we have online in 2016.
I don't, you know, like I said earlier on, and the interim finance director paraphrased what I was trying to say, we are plateauing. We're plateauing at a very good spot, don't get me wrong, but our challenge will be to maintain that revenue stream. And I think you're right, there are some economic factors out there that could result, and, you know, if a third of our product is offline for three months, you know, I don't, you all see when we share with you, our sales tax is actually down a little bit, and it's noticeable, because we actually had one of our higher sales tax generators off for a period of time, so, with the French Laundry. So, it's very noticeable with some of our stuff, if something goes offline for a period of time. So, I think being conservative in those areas, anticipating that there could be some changes on our significant revenue stream is appropriate.
Yeah. Councilmember Dornbecker, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a lot.
Vice Mayor?
So, Richard, you're not making a recommendation that we evaluate the... So, Richard, you're not making a recommendation that we evaluate the current debt service that the town has in place. I know we have two large notes, one of which I was on the committee to facilitate the underwriting of that, which frankly rebuilt this building and repaid these streets out here. The question that I have is, you know, you're not recommending that we evaluate and pay down in advance any of the debt that we have. Was that a consideration in the deliberation?
We had talked about, you know, paying down maybe some of the OPEB, you know, unfunded liability. Okay, we had a discuss, Stephen and I had a discussion about that. And I was of the opinion that, at least my opinion, was that, you know, you're paying down kind of a fuzzy liability, and the way I say fuzzy liability is that they are measured every year actuarially, okay? And the actuaries, when they measure those things, they have, you know, they bring in assumptions, you know, that of what earnings can be, or what mortality is, and there's probably dozens and dozens of factors that go into that. So, that, I had a situation in a past life, you know, where we wanted to buy down, you know, our unfunded liability for our pension system, you know, and we ended up doing a pension obligation bond, you know, to do that very thing. And we lucked out, you know, when we did that, because we hit the market just right before the equity markets were at low at that point. We put in a slug of money into the retirement fund, and we were making double-digit returns, you know, for a number of years. Other communities that did the same thing, they hit the market very, very wrong, and they will never recover, you know, from the losses, you know, of the stock market. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that I am a very conservative guy, you know, and in terms of squirreling chestnuts, so to speak, I would rather be in a position of having those not outflow from the town, because once they leave, you have no control over them.
And let me add to your specific question on the two debt issuance. The call provisions are in place yet, and both of those are not at a sufficient point that we would have savings. We will monitor that, but they have a five and a ten-year, and they're just not at that point that, and the interest rates also. The other thing on our more recent debt is it also has a, the utility enterprise fund has a significant portion of that. If you remember, our 2013 bond that paid for the renovation here is general fund funded, and the sewer and road repairs were enterprise fund funded. So the enterprise fund is not in a position to match the pay, but we really aren't at a point where the call provisions work for us.
They're not, we're not even at that stage.
We did look at that, but they don't.
Okay.
Now, what I will also say, because I think, you bring up a really good question, we could look at using your capital project fund balance if it's built up at a certain point, when one of the call opportunities is there, that could be an opportunity to revisit that if that's a, but I also want to point out that we've learned that in some cases, and this is again, I'm being conservative, while we don't want to overutilize debt, but allowing debt also allows us to get more stuff done at a lower cost and at a fair, more equitable rate for all of the users, because if we carry no debt, that actually means we're burdening the current user more so. So just something for us, I don't think you're overburdened on your debt ratio, and I don't anticipate us probably looking at, we'll be retiring the flood wall debt within three years, so I mean, I think we're very conservatively positioned there, and I don't see us likely going out for debt, with one caveat, and that would be, if we were to go look at a more aggressive utility undergrounding, the only way that I'm going to see that we can get there would be a combination of some type of public and private partnership and potential debt and assessment district where maybe the town funded a significant portion, and the affected property owners might have to, but that's a whole nother thing out there, but on the horizon, if we were to, if that was something the council wanted to look at some future day.
Okay. Then you just asked the question I was about to ask, so thank you for doing that. Is there action to be had on the item? I think we've had a fairly thorough discussion at this point.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 153315, approving the allocation of one point five million, twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars, general fund, unassigned fund balance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I am going to give you my admonition that I don't believe we're going to get one point five million again next year, but I hope to be wrong.
As you have been so far.
Okay, for clarification, are you, are you going to allocate that one point five, one million to the?
As presented.
As recommended by staff.
As recommended by staff.
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to make clear that.
And the twelve thousand nine seventy-one?
Is unassigned.
Is an, continues to be unassigned.
In the general fund.
Yeah.
Thank you, council.
We're clear on that? Yes, another good problem to have. Okay, moving on to our first true administrative regular item. Resolution approving and adopting plans and specs for construction bids for the corporate yard renovation project.
Bear with me.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have before you a proposal, adopt a resolution approving and adopting plans and specs, and authorizing our staff to advertise for the construction bids for the corporation yard renovation project. So, this is a project that you have seen at least once, actually multiple times during our budgeting process, however, we weren't at the point during that particular time when we had a set of plans. Actually, as I came on board here, we had begun discussing the need for some renovations for the corp yard. Just to give you a little background, this project was developed to provide some office space, some, a conference room, a break room, and some ADA compliant spaces for the public works maintenance personnel. This building was built in the mid-seventies with the joint wastewater treatment plant, and has been modified and upgraded to serve the town and veterans home. However, since that time, the plant has gone through several upgrades, however, this space that you're seeing tonight before you has not had much of any additional upgrades. Their current configuration has not had an HVA system for office space. The guys right now are using an in-window cooler that barely kind of cools the space enough in the summertime to make it comfortable, but that's what they've been using. The bathrooms are.
I'm going to go.
Yep, can we go to the next one? Sorry. The bathrooms are non-compliant, non-ADA compliant, and they contain no facilities for use should we have a member of the opposite sex who would also have need for those facilities. Having seen this and discussed it multiple occasions, we, we gathered together an architect, a design team. They provided some conceptual designs, and in April 2015, we provided those conceptual designs to the staff, and they provided comments. We then brought our engineer's estimate forward for budget approval, and that budgeting process was approved for this fiscal year. The proposed plan is to upgrade and remodel the office space in the maintenance building, so what you see in the photos in front of you are photos of the office space as it currently exists, so about six or eight desks, and a refrigerator, a small sink, everything is in that one space. The whole MuniOps organization occupies that one small room. The picture that you see on the right-hand side of the screen is the locker room and bathroom. So again, it's rather sparse, meets the need to use the restroom, and the locker facilities are inside the restroom, so it's a little bit tight. So the proposed plan is to increase the office space, provide some space for the public works manager so that he can have a little bit of privacy should he need that. A break room, we can go to the next, and a break room, an ADA compliant bathroom and locker room that has two separate unisex bathrooms with a separate locker room. So, if you look at the, at the plan in front of you, and if you've been up to the yard, that first picture that we had shown you, if you go back to the first picture, Julie, the very first one. So where those cars are parked now is what we're going to use for the new office space. We're going to utilize the existing roof and that metal structure, and they provided some engineering and architectural design to enclose that space and make it more of a, it's going to make it an office, actually, so if we go back to the floor plan again. So, the break room and conference room that you see now, that we have in front of you, is what we will use for what is currently our existing office. So we're going to, we're going to remodel that a little bit, fix up the back kitchen area so we can actually use it for providing some meals if we have overtime. Occasionally, we have an event, and so we'll be able to use that space. We'll also be able to use it to do training, that's where we have our safety meetings every Monday morning, so we'll be able to, we'll be able to host some training, we'll have a bit of a training setup in there with a TV and some other media available. And then we'll have a separate now office space for the public works supervisor, and then some additional office space for the crew. This is going to include some furniture at some point in time, we're hoping that we can get that included in this build. Of course, the restrooms, as I talked about, are both available for use by either sex, and then additional locker room space outside of the restroom.
Joe, can you, in this diagram, explain where the carport is?
Yeah, so the carport is where the general office is now. So if you look at that general office area, that's where the carport is now.
So that's where the second restroom, storage in the small office and the general office, all that will be what the carport is?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's basically where it's at, that's what you're looking at. So, we thought it was a great use of an existing space. Initially, we looked at using inside the warehouse, because we thought that would be a more straightforward and clean build-out. However, we need that space for other parts of our operations, so that's where the sign shop is, there's a garage in there where we do some servicing of vehicles, just wasn't, we couldn't use it. So the engineer's estimate, without contingencies, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we currently have that budgeted. It's in the current budget, it's estimated the first working day for the project will be sometime in the February time period, and it will be completed, weather permitting, sometime in the April 2016 timeframe. Staff is recommending the council approve the plans and specs and authorize us to advertise for the bids for the construction of the corporate yard office renovation. That I'm happy to answer. Any questions you might have?
Questions to the report, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I'd like to say one, and that is, where are those trucks going to be parked?
So, the trucks are, and that was a good question, it's one of the ones we actually went through, Councilmember Dornbecker. So, basically, we're going to be able to just move those vehicles now out in front of where that space is.
I see.
It won't be covered, it's not really, it's a necessity, it's not a necessity, it's going to be, we're going to be much better able to use that space as office space, and we have plenty of parking availability in that parking lot. So that's, it's, it's going to be just fine, we have plenty of parking.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Mueller, any questions?
I think it's long overdue.
I agree, it is long overdue. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just one question about the HVAC. So you guys are going to install like a fully functioning HVAC, so you're not using like one-day units and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a modern HVAC that's going to meet all the modern codes and requirements for building that size. But we looked at trying to do several things, including some of those, because they have some really, they've come out with some pretty innovative ways to cool and heat buildings now, including what we see in some of our own office spaces, which is air conditioners that are located in an office space, or heaters that are located in an office space. And when we looked at that, it just wasn't an effective use of funds or the environment we're trying to heat and cool. So we're going to use a more traditional heating and kind of what we have at the house, but a little bigger unit.
And are those, is that a Butler building?
I don't know what a Butler building is, but.
A steel building?
It is a steel building, yep. It is, it's just a typical slab-on-grade with.
Zero insulation.
Zero insulation. It does have some insulation, actually. It has a little bit of insulation, but it's, it's pretty smart.
And if I could, just for historical, you may recall, we did an ESCO project, an energy conservation project about six years ago, and that included adding the insulation and some minor modifications at the corp yard. It was not insulated prior to that. So, this will be the first significant investment, and we're going to be looking at appropriate systems furniture for the crew, you know, the right kind of stuff to make that space. We're pretty excited about it. I think it's a, I agree with the comments about the council, this will be consistent, and now we will have all of our spaces, I think, at an industry acceptable grade.
Is the full one seventy already budgeted?
It is, yep.
And the reason for no contingency is because we're in charge of the project?
We are. He thinks it's a good tight number. We've worked on it quite a bit, and we actually had some bids, test bids earlier, and that number is, we feel, our engineer feels like it's a good number.
Okay.
But we have a bit more than that. I mean, we're budgeted at two fifteen.
Okay.
And what we'll do is, that's where the public works director mentioned, you know, the systems furniture, once we know where we're going, then we can start finalizing and working on that. So, our hope will be that we can get a significant number of that within the budget authorization, and if not, we'll do all of our analysis and know what little bit more we need for next year's budget when we come in. Do apologize, typically, as you know, we bring things like this, and they're on the consent calendar, but we felt that it was just, one, it's our employees' home, and we felt it was important to show you what we're talking about, because this is not one of those spaces that you or the public sees all the time, but it's critically important to the success and our mission in providing an appropriate house and a safe environment for our employees to be fully productive. And I don't want to belabor, but with the unisex restrooms, and we need to be capable to support male and female employees in the corporation yard, and we can't currently.
For guests.
Of course, yeah, for guests, absolutely.
The Go Green team had an interesting meeting up there, a tour of the facilities, and it was over a hundred degrees that day, so I totally support you having the HVAC.
So, I'll invite public comment, but I'm thinking we don't have any, so I'll uninvite it, and let's see if there's action to be had.
I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number fifteen dash thirty-three sixteen, approving and adopting plans and specifications, and authorizing staff to advertise for construction bids for the corporation yard renovation projects CF dash zero 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 nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
I think that's one of the very easy ones to support our public works team, so thank you. Next up, we have item twelve B, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission appointments. And we did meet earlier tonight and held these interviews, so we'll start with, do we have a staff report to introduce this, or are we going right into possible action?
The real simple is that you had vacancies, you've recruited for them, we've had four applicants, and there are three positions available, and you had interviews this afternoon earlier, and it's a council discrimination as to whom you would like to appoint to the vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
And there was one, there still is, there remains a vacancy, the non-voting high school position that had no applications submitted.
That is correct, we continue to have an open recruitment, but it has a limited target, which is it needs to be a high school age student from Mountainville.
Right. Okay. So with that.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to first invite the council if there's any discussion.
Sorry.
If there's any discussion about the interviews. If not, Councilmember Dornbecker, propose your motion.
I would like to move that we appoint Diane Page, Verlin Chalmers, I believe his last name is not Chambers, and Debbie Wellborn to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second to the motion, that motion does not move forward. Is there another motion to be had?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Diane Page and Paul Marsiniak to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, is there a second to that? I will second that motion that we do appoint Diane Page and Paul Marsiniak. I will be supporting an additional motion after that, but is there any further discussion on the appointment of Diane Page and Paul Marsiniak? All in favor? favor of those two appointments?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Opposed, okay. So Councilmember Dornbecker opposed, but those appointments are passed, Diane Page and Paul Marsiniak. Is there any additional motion to be had for the third vacancy?
I'll make a motion to approve Verlin Chalmers as Parks, to Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of Verlin Chambers being appointed to the third vacancy?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any opposed? So that was unanimous approval?
No.
Yeah, I believe.
It was, I-
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, so that was unanimous. So just to sum up, Diane Page, Paul Marsiniak and Verlin Chamber, or, no, you got me.
Chalmers.
Chalmers have been appointed to the vacancies of the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. And we'd like to also thank not only all of them, but Debbie Wellborn for her willingness to apply and go through the interview process earlier this evening. So thanks to all of them. We're gonna move on now to Item 12C, appointment of our longstanding Yountville representative to the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District. Steven Rosa has continued to represent us on that board and has reapplied for that upcoming term. Is there a motion to reappoint Steven Rosa?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dornbecker moved, Councilmember Muller seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, and just a council-wide thank you and appreciation for the many, many years that our former council member has served us in this capacity. He's done a fabulous job and we appreciate his ongoing service. So we'll move on now to our next item, consideration of authorization for the mayor to send a letter of support for type 47 licenses in Napa County.
I'm gonna be very brief because I think there's a very detailed staff report in there. The real issue here is that our community, and when I say community here, it's the greater Napa Valley, the five cities and the unincorporated, we have a challenge with ABC license because of our unique industry in tourism, restaurants. What periodically happens is we reach a maximum point with the licenses and then the ABC licenses necessary to offer full alcohol become a cash cow for the owners and very cost prohibitive. Very similarly, about six years ago, we did a regional effort to increase the number of ABC license where a new restaurant or an existing restaurant could apply one. And when you initially start the license, there were about 12,000. Right now, they're going on the market for 400,000. So at this point, the cities of Napa, St. Helena and Calistoga have endorsed this. So the effort here is that our Assembly Member Dodd has been willing to, indicated a willingness with his team to work with the cities and the county to move forward with a legislation that would allow us to get another 25 licenses countywide. The other thing that's important and the one thing that the early proponents that met with staff, initially they were talking about restaurants of 50 seats and larger. And we explained to them that if they wanted our support, they needed to be a little more appropriate size and they've agreed to bring that down to 25 just because St. Helena, Calistoga and Yountville have a lot of restaurants that aren't focused on 50 and greater seats. So they agreed and worked with us on that. So this is simply to provide authorization for us to prepare the letter for the signature.
Thank you. Any member of the public want to comment?
I have a question.
Okay, that's right. We have questions beforehand. Vice Mayor, yes, please.
Thank you. So when I read this, I interpreted it, is it still that the way the state offers those onsite general licenses is one license per 2,000 inhabitants?
That's correct and that's one of the challenges that we face with our small population and our large culinary. So this is why we have to go through and get special legislation approved periodically in order to circumvent or get around that limitation.
And did we, and I'll say we, meaning the staff and what was presented in the staff report, consider that those people that spent half a million dollars for these licenses are being unduly treated when we open up and present more licenses to be available at a much, what would certainly be a much lower rate due to the increase in supply?
I think one needs to remember that they do this on a five, a five-per-year lottery. So it only, it opens up, it'll be done over five years. It's a consideration that some of ours, but it's, the industry, those in the restaurant and the various folks are very much in favor of this on a countywide basis because otherwise there's, it's only going to get more expensive for some of those. But again, this is, we're here being more of a regional support for something that recognizes your first point, which is the allocation formula does not really work appropriately in a tourism community.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Any other questions in the report? No? And I saw no interest from the public to comment, so further discussion by council or action? Is there a motion or further discussion?
I would just make one comment before there's action taken. I, in a prior life, was party to going out and bidding on one of these ABC licenses. And I won't tell you how many moons ago it was, but let's just say that at the time, it was in excess of $100,000 for a license. And it was egregious that it was being asked or being presented that we could purchase one for that amount. What was clear to me at the time, being the finance person that was evaluating the potential return on that $100,000, is that it made all the economic sense in the world, which is why half a million dollars for one of these licenses over a period of time may or may not be inconsistent with what a reasonable return on investment might be. And therefore, increasing the supply will, to some degree, affect the overall relative price. I don't know how necessarily, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't approve this because I think one per 2,000 people is not necessarily appropriate, but I just can recall that there was a certain evaluation in every business that would look at acquiring one of these licenses would do, I assume, that they would be doing this kind of analysis on what they were gonna be able to return after they purchased one of these. That's my comment. That's the only comment I have.
And I would just respond that evaluation could be applied to virtually anything that is bought and sold with supply and demand. And if one is basing the return on investment by increasing an exorbitant profit margin, I'm not sure that's necessarily the best argument to oppose it, not that you're opposing it. But also, I think that this is an incremental shift from, you know, 70 licenses to an additional 20. Now, I'm not the one that is trying to get the return on the overpaid investment, but it's also a way to allow business owners that could not otherwise afford to even try to engage in small business or local business, they at least have a more legitimate opportunity now. So is there action at this point? I'll make a motion that we have to find the number now.
There isn't one you'd such a recommend.
I move that we recommend authorizing myself to send a letter related to Assembly Member Dodd's proposal to put forward legislation to increase the number of type 47 licenses available in Napa County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. That support is granted. Quickly, moving ahead to water conservation update before it rains tomorrow. We always have these updates just before-
I was not able to get the data needed for the water update. They were still in the process of taking readings. As you know, from the last meeting, some of our reads are now becoming more manual because the batteries are starting to fail. So we're in the process of upgrading that system, thanks to your approval from the last council meeting. However, at the current time, we're now still doing the manual reads where we have to. So as a consequence, it takes a little bit longer to gather that data. I will have that for you in the next council meeting. I apologize. However, I do have a Hopper Creek update, so if that's okay, I'll give you a little update on Hopper Creek.
Sure.
So if you look at the really small presentation, oh, there we are. So the upper left-hand corner is the Hopper Creek at French Laundry Gardens. I'm happy to say that that is down to the punch list with less than 10% of the landscaping and irrigation remaining to be installed. If you have the opportunity to go by and look at that site, I think it's kind of amazing where they stuck those little sticks in that I couldn't believe were gonna grow. They're already starting to kinda sprout and turn up towards the sun and starting to fill in that bank and it looks really great. It's much less steep than it initially been. And I think here, within the next few weeks, it's really gonna kinda, it's gonna be hard to tell that anything went on there at all other than the stabilization they were able to do. Same is true with Velagio Channel in the center of the frame at the top. About 5% of the irrigation remains. They've replaced the fencing and the chain link fence is up. I will say that our friends at Velagio are very happy that we're able to clear out all those tulies. It helps the drainage in that area. They were having problems during the spring when the tulies would kinda just spread their seeds everywhere and it was kind of a little bit of a hassle for them. So we're happy to see those removed. Again, it's an area where we put the tulies in. They're growing like weeds, really, and it's another area where it's hard to believe that that work just finished because it's already kinda greening up. Beard ditch is essentially complete except for the storm drains are gonna be installed, but the majority of the concrete work and the riprap is finished. What we're waiting on right now in that structure at the bottom left-hand corner is the guardrail that we're going to install. So there will be some substantial railing put up so that somebody who goes onto that deck, which will be actually the end of a sidewalk when that project's finished, so that will be sidewalk all the way down to that end now, will have a piece of guardrail to make sure that they don't tumble off into that ditch. And then at the top right-hand corner, Oak Circle, I was, today they sprayed the hydroseed. So if you've noticed the Oak Circle area, the area in between where they did most of the dirt work is already starting to sprout grass. So they didn't do hardly any work at all in there, but I noticed it's greening up a little bit. And now with the, with the hydroseeding in place, a little bit of rain's coming, we should see some grass sprouting pretty quickly in that Oak Circle area. I will also say that the plan that I just received before I came into the meeting today, the new schedule calls for them to start doing the landscaping and the sidewalk in the next week. So we're going to engage them on a time-materials basis. They're going to install some mature oak trees, some red buds are gonna go in there, some additional kinda lower planting. We had Gretchen McCain kinda help us design a landscape plan that's gonna kinda tie into that Oak Circle area. It's gonna be spectacular and it's gonna start getting installed here within the next week or two. Certainly by the end of the month, at Christmas time, you should see most of that work hopefully nearing completion. And then that will lead them into the final phase, which is the Fennel area. This week, you've seen finally PG&E's subcontractors show up and begin some of that work to the final two phases of relocation of the two utilities. First over at Vista and Fennel and then, and then down at Heritage and Fennel. So once those two utilities are relocated, I've been told they have clearance to do the first one at Vista and Fennel December 7th. So that, when they get clearance, that means that they're, they've got the okay to shut down the electricity from that facility and then de-energize everything, get in there and pull out all that old cable and reinstall the new cable and the new duct that they've installed and they'll go down. And Heritage is gonna be on December 17th. So we plan on sending out a letter to the residents in the area and updating them on what the timeline is, especially for the people in that Fennel area in general, Vista condos, the Heritage area, the neighbors along Fennel, so that we can just kinda update them on what's going on and let them know that, no, the work hasn't stopped completely, but there is a bit of a pause while the utility relocation is in place. And then once that's finished, they're gonna pick back up and come January, they're gonna start installing the storm drain and doing the paving and sidewalk. So we look for that completion. Right now, the timeline is sometime mid-February.
And I just wanna say that this delay really is a result of the PG&E's inability to relocate the electrical lines in a timely manner.
Yeah, it's been a disgrace how long it's taken. It's, that was the four months of inactivity I was alluding to and-
That project you were speaking about, Mayor, was not even a part of this project, but because it's kinda fallen in the collateral damage category, I guess, they're now gonna, they've now lumped it in with this project because I think it was convenient for them. But that original piece of work that you saw in Vista and Vineyard Circle was not a part of this project. It just was ancillary to what's going on and now it's been delayed because this project's been delayed. So we are crafting a letter to PG&E and letting them to know that we're not very happy with this and giving them a timeline on exactly what happened. So rest assured, we're-
And we have a new name to add to the letter.
Yes. But I would also add to that, some of the areas north of that toward Forester Lane, they have done a terrible job of removing the spray paint. Some of it's not even covered up at all. Some of it's covered up insufficiently, in my opinion.
We'll take a look, Mayor. One of the things that we need to look at is if it's not a fully completed project, and I'm not gonna defend anybody here, but if the lines are still there, they could be because the work's not done, but we'll be on top of that in terms of what needs to be.
If there is another entity that can be contacted regarding PG&E's inability to deliver on schedule, I'm happy to have that conversation. But also, I'm a little concerned on Fennel itself with some of the temporary patching of the, you know, the, why am I, the jits work, for lack of a better term. It's already dropping at least an inch and it's making for fairly uncomfortable vehicle traffic.
That has been noted and they're gonna be back in to patch that up. There's a couple of things out there that need their attention, so they're gonna be out here in the next couple of days to patch that up and there's some drainage work that needs to be done.
And the patchwork on the sidewalk and the driveway into Girardi is also a disaster.
I agree.
It's actually not even safe to be walking. There are a lot of folks from the Adventist home that regularly walk that area and some of them are mobility challenged and I don't think it's a safe condition. So I would strongly recommend we have them improve that area.
I will make sure we talk about that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You bet.
So that's our Hopper Creek update. Open Gov informational presentation?
Yes, this is a great opportunity for the town staff. This is our finance team back out and I'd like to make sure many of you will recognize Priya. Priya Nixon is our management fellow and she and Richard are going to share with you something that at a staff level, we're very excited about, especially as it continues to relate to the council's goals and strategic plan about more open, transparent, accessible, and also how we're more efficient and we're using technology. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Priya and Richard.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for having us here. As Steve mentioned, my name is Priya and I'm the management fellow. I'm in the little office where everyone can see me when they come in. I'm really excited. This is actually my first council meeting that I'm presenting at. So I'm really excited to be here and I'm even more excited to talk about this new financial transparency tool called Open Gov. Open Gov is a way that will transform your approach to looking at the town's finances. And as we have heard from Rich, we have a lot of great stories to tell. Open Gov is a company that's based in California and we are actually one of the first group of smaller agencies to be part of this. So this is really special. And when working with Open Gov, they are really impressed with our budgeting process and this is a great compliment to putting this out on the web and to tie in the strategic initiatives that we have with our strategic plan to make our financial transparency easy and engaging. So what I'm gonna do is just give you a little overview of what this site looks like. And I'll be inviting you into my office for more of a one-on-one guide and introduction because it can be a lot to look at, but it's really exciting and it's very easy to understand. So I'm just gonna go over a little bit about what you'll see when you'll go to our website. And this is pretty much- our website, and this is pretty much, um, the first, the first page, and you'll notice that we have a few notes, um, these are just screenshots right now, notes of things that will tell some of the stories, um, when you see changes or trends. So, this is the first page, and it pretty much allows you full access and different types of graphs. So, as I mentioned in my staff report, um, we do a monthly financial report, which is great. It has really important information, but imagine being able to dig a little bit deeper and to customize something to what you're looking for. One of the things that I learned was, and I'm relatively new to fund accounting, is the, the ease of digging in historically and finding some of those stories, and it's all through Open Gov. So, you can really channel, you know, your questions and find those answers. So, this is our annual report, um, and there are different ways that you can look at the annual report. You can do, um, a stacked graph, there's a pie chart, we'll take a look at some other, um, we have trends right here, we'll take a look at some other ones. So, one of the really cool things that we did was based on some of the initiatives in our strategic plan, and some of the questions that we get from our residents and even our staff members is create these really cool saved views, um, and this is where you can change the way that you want to look at it. So, this is one of the questions that I came up with, so how does a town spend its money on community promotion? Well, that's really important to us because we have a lot of great community events. So, I have created a bunch of saved views that will allow residents, really, at the click of their mouse, to find the answers, and we can add to this list as well. Um, we have some questions, some answers to some questions about, you know, where does the money come from and, and how do we allocate it, and what are, you know, we talked about our big three revenues, so, questions like that. Um, you'll also notice that there will have some information that will drive us back to our website, um, to our budget documents. So, we're really tying in everything. Um, and one of the really cool things is the filter feature. So, we have these great saved views, but there'll, there'll also be the ability to find what you want. So, we have our filters over here, and you'll be able to drop, use our dropdown menu to look at some of the different categories, so if you're interested in only looking at revenues, you'll have the option to do that, break it down by departments as well. But let's say that you just wanna search for something, it's very user-friendly and easy to go down and to our Filtered by All and just search. The other really cool thing about this is, so we have all these graphs, but what about the numbers? Because the numbers are just as important. So, you'll see at the bottom that there are, um, actual charts with numbers that correlate exactly to the actual chart or graph. Um, what's really cool is you'll be able to download a JPEG and download the Excel and then share it, or email it, or, you know, bring it into a meeting. So, it's really user-friendly. We all have different schedules, um, you know, the budget's online and the budget is great, but this kinda gives you more of that interactivity, and that's really what we've heard from you in terms of our innovation and using technology, and this is a really great direction for the town. And so, that is Open Gov.
Just a couple of comments also. Um, working with Priya has been amazing because she has so much energy and, uh, pushing me along every step of the way, you know, even with all the other stuff I have to do. But, we're seeing Open Gov having, you know, two audiences, really, you know? The external audience, of course, is the town people, you know, the, the citizens of the town of Youngville, you know, which they will be able to do a lot of the things that Priya has just explained. But the other major audience for Open Gov is the internal users, the department heads, the staff, the town council, the town manager, the finance director, because we'll be able to, uh, get a lot of detailed information, which is currently in our financial system, Springbrook, okay? And bring it forward into a Open Gov environment. We, in my day, we used to call these graphic user interfaces, okay, GUI, alright? And I've done a, a few of those things, and I always kinda termed it, you know, pointing and clicking your way to heaven, because you don't have to go into tables and you have to go into dropdowns, well, you'd have dropdown screens, but you don't have to be, you know, really familiar with the intricacies of a financial system to use Open Gov, because it is very intuitive. So, at the end of the day, um, if you're a department head or a staff member, and you wanna go into your own department's expenditures to see not only, you know, how the money was spent, but the transactions backing up those accounts, such as the checks going out, the vendors, the, uh, the, you know, the, um, accounting, you know, uh, you know, the accounting transaction detail, uh, you'll be able to do that very easily in Open Gov, where trying to do that in Springbrook is very challenging unless you really know Springbrook. Open Gov is very intuitive that way. So, we're seeing just, you know, some really profound changes in the way that the town does business. Uh, right now, we have the ability to download Open Gov, you know, basically each month when we close off our monthly, you know, uh, monthly, monthly cycles, okay? Ultimately, what we're gonna wanna see with Open Gov is to be able to upload the information from Springbrook on a daily basis, or at, you know, at one point in time, when the technology gets there from Open Gov, to do it on a perpetual basis. So, any time that you wanna go in to see what's going on with your financial data, it'll be on a real-time basis, and that's the ultimate goal of what we're trying to do, accomplish with Open Gov. The other thing that is really amazing is that when I implemented GUI type of, these type of systems, you know, we would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, to do something like that. The cost to the city, the cost to the town of Open Gov was 6,000 bucks. 6,000, that's it. And at this point, uh, all the data, you know, of going back nine years, you know, to 2000, uh, not nine years, but to back to 2009, 10, for all the budget data, budget and actual expenditures and revenues is all downloaded into Open Gov, as well as balance sheets for the same period, has been downloaded into Open Gov. I just finished doing that yesterday, and it's looking really good. So, it is, um, kind of, uh, you know, I'm very excited about it. I caught it from Priya, but, um, I, I think it's gonna be amazing for the town, for the public, as well as the, the internal users, as we go down the Open Gov road, because it's, uh, going to, uh, change the way we do business. You know, me, you may wanna think about, um, you know, the monthly, you know, financial reports that we presently give you, uh, we're gonna have some discussion about whether you wanna continue those in the same way or alter that due to the Open Gov, but that'll be something that, that will be open for a new discussion later on.
One other thing we're kind of excited is, is this will also allow us, as a staff level, to access this information during a council meeting to potentially answer some questions. Um, again, your staff is pretty excited about this, um, maybe more so than the public, but we know that there are some folks in the public that will find it, um, informative and helpful. The other thing is, I will bring it back, we will be bringing all of you in for a, um, a guided tour, so you can see, play with it, and, and kind of look at that. We're gonna continue to work on some staff training, and then, even though the press is here and covering, we will do a more detailed outreach to the press and probably a, a tutorial guide for our local press so they can see and utilize it. Um, we're pretty excited about how it can be used, and we've seen some pretty powerful demonstrations of how certain communities are using it. Um, so, as we move into the new year of 2016, you'll see press releases and some things as we really make them more formal, uh, but we did wanna show you what your staff has been working with on this. Um, and again, we think it's very consistent with, you know, your goals of transparency, efficiency. Interim Director, uh, Mr. Arrow pointed out the, uh, we have a, what I will call a fairly archaic, uh, monthly report format, and I will assure you that we will be coming back to you after we have some time for you to get comfortable with this, with a recommendation, and we'll all have some meetings with each of you to, to kinda look at it, but I think that you're gonna find that there's an opportunity for us to, uh, probably move to a quarterly financial report, because a lot of the things that you'll be able to do and get, or we can create a template for you to go write and get it, um, and then we'll be able to focus on a more qualitative report, rather than just doing something out of, of routine that does not necessarily add value to the council. So, uh, with that, um, again, uh, very much thank you, Priya.
I've got a couple of questions, and Vice Mayor does too. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Um, thank you, first of all, for the presentation. You know, I, in looking at this, you know, I, I really do see it as a tool for the council as well, I mean, and staff, um, and obviously for the community and the, the residents as well. You know, I, I can very quickly, 'cause I use these types of tools in our business, um, see how this works. A couple of questions about it, though. So, you, you suggested that it would be, obviously, a link to the town website, or it will be linked to and from the town website, is my assumption. How do we get the message out? I know Carrie's gonna help us with part of that, but, you know, a lot of this kinda stuff is all great, and we're trying to provide transparency, but if the 10 people or however many people we are in this room are the only ones that ever use it, then it might've been a smart investment, but we're the only ones that are really utilizing it. So, I just, I ask us to think about that and be creative about how we message that. Um, you did talk a little about timeliness of data. That was my first question, because I'm thinking, is this an overlay, is this application or this GUI is an overlay of Springbrook, which is your financial system, or are you having to manually feed it, i.e. import-export data to get up into it so that people can actually drill into that? Um, and what level of drill-down capability or capacity is there to this system? Um, when you tell me that ultimately, you know, you're hoping to get it to a monthly, or now it's monthly, you hopefully will get it to a daily, and at some point in time it'll be perpetual, that implies to me that it's something that's, um, constantly either being refreshed back up into Open Gov, which is, I'm assuming, some sort of platform that exists outside of Springbrook, or are they perpetually linked, and so it's, it's not like this push-pull technology?
Sure. The way it works right now, uh, Count, uh, Vice Mayor, is that we have to do, uh, we have to draw out of Springbrook, okay, uh, Excel spreadsheets, okay?
Okay.
With data, okay?
So, CSV and you upload it?
And, and basically, then, uh, we upload that into Open Gov, and that's currently the state of the technology. Uh, all, the, the, the strategic or the long-term plan of Open Gov is to do it much more often than once a month.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the idea is at some point in the future, and I can't tell you when that's gonna be, is that there will be a data transfer link built into Springbrook to automatically update Open Gov at the end of every day.
Yes.
You know, that's how...
So, some SQL query that pushes the information out?
Exactly.
So, my only question to that is, you know, when you implement systems like this, although they're typically not hackable, you know, we don't have to read about too many things that go on in the world today where, you know, they're probably watching us now, not just on the TV, but on the cameras on our iPads, and I just would caution us to make sure that we've got appropriate and sufficient firewall so that people can't work backwards into our financial system, because when we present a report like earlier, where we have a million and a half dollars in excess, um, funds being unallocated, um...
That's why we don't use the word, 'cause it's not excess. It was actually part of our program. It's unassigned funds.
My, my point is that, you know, you talk about, you know, moving money around, it's very easy, I'm assuming, for someone who knows how to do this kinda stuff to get back into it.
It's a reporting tool. It does not replace Springbrook, okay? I have to make that very clear. It is just an information doorway that goes one way.
It's an image.
It doesn't go two ways.
And then, my last question, um, I'm sorry I take so much time, it's just, is this kinda stuff I enjoy, so might as well ask questions I have. Um, so, you did talk about, Priya, this being, um, obviously sort of available today, 'cause you're using it. When do you anticipate it will be rolled out to either of the people in this room? Um, because it sounds like maybe the staff is already aware and using it, but when will it be rolled out in a larger framework, or do you have a timeline?
Yeah, so, that's a great question. Um, right now, we're in the final steps of making sure everything looks good and everything has been uploaded correctly, so I would probably say, like, um...
Probably early January.
Yeah, early January.
Because we're gonna have to go through a training phase?
Under commit, over deliver.
Right, and then, just to answer your question about marketing, so Open Gov has a great press package, which we're working with them on, and we're even toying with the idea of having a little video on our website, so there'll be a dedicated section on the finance department's website that will link. And one of the really cool things is because Open Gov is so self-sufficient, we will really have the ability to, if we wanted to change some of these saved views that we have, um, to make them new or refresh them to really keep people engaged, but we can update that section of the website to keep it current and fresh. Um, and we'll be working, we'll be doing, you know, a full press release, and this is really interactive with our social media, and we have seen a really big increase with our Facebook users and our Twitter users, so, um, but I definitely take to heart what you said, you know, we have all this technology, it's here, we wanna keep using it, we wanna get our money's worth. So, um, I would be open to hearing from anyone on suggestions on how to do that.
I'm a finance guy, not a marketing guy.
One of the, one of the things about Open Gov, and I'll try not to be very belaboring, you know, but I'm very excited about it, is that, um, there is the ability, you know, of, of having it very user-friendly with lots of pictures and graphs, as well as frequent, frequently asked questions. Okay, how do we get our money? Where's it spent? Where does Parks and Rec spend their bucks? You double-click on a question, it'll show you exactly the chart or the table, you know, which will explain, which, explain the question. That is one of the really remarkable things about Open Gov, is that it's very, very flexible from the user's point of view. It's great. Thank you.
Yeah, so, question, and, and actually, virtually all the questions the Vice Mayor asked, I was going to ask, so we've covered that, but getting to these, uh, the filters and the, in the shared views, so the filters, you have to have certain keywords to know what to ask for?
Um, yes, for some of them. It will only give you the options, so, um, if we're looking at departments, you'll only see all of the departments listed, um, so it's pretty self-guided in that.
But then, you're gonna have a storage of frequently asked questions, or questions you're going to put up there because you know that they're valuable...
Right, like, exactly.
But, it doesn't look like they're in any specific order, so is somebody scrolling through 50 questions to try to find one that might be their topic?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we can do is, um, these are sort of ordered right now in terms of working from the general fund, but we can easily slide the views, make them different, have certain ones at the top, and we can, I can look into seeing if we can even categorize some of them. That may be helpful, so that it's very easy for someone who doesn't have a strong finance background to find the answer.
Yeah, so, there's not a search feature necessarily, is there?
Well, there is a search feature, but it's more towards, um, at the end of your search. So, we have some of the questions that you can, that are already there to answer, and then you can actually filter through everything in search. So, I think I showed you this slide right here, so you'll be able to actually filter through departments or search with a keyword.
Got it, okay.
Or dropdown screens, that's the other thing that we have there, is that if you wanted to see all the departments that are, you know, attached to the general fund, there would be a dropdown screen, and you could highlight the department that you wanted to look at, like community development, or, uh, planning, or finance, or...
So, this is a link on our, our town website?
Yeah, it's not live yet, but we'll have a...
But it will be.
Yeah, and it will be very colorful and very interactive and very easy to read.
Great.
Great.
Thank you for your inaugural presentation and report. We only made you wait three hours to give it.
And in your own words, it's very cool.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you both very much.
Okay.
Okay, discussion and direction on Towne Youngville Community Foundation.
Um, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm gonna be relatively brief and kinda go to a few options and discussions for you. Um, as you may recall, this came out as a, uh, council request for us to look at putting together a, uh, community foundation, in part to allow the town to have a nonprofit to support a number of town-related initiatives, such as the Art Fund, so that the ability to raise money for significant art programs, our Youth Subsidy Fund. We also approached, uh, crafting an idea that the, the town would like to do more senior and youth services support. We also have tried to craft an outline that allows us to support other organizations, and we're being somewhat vague in that, because some of those are changing as we come about, but the idea is there may be some initiatives and efforts that are currently being done by others that may need a home and some help. So, with your encouragement, um, staff's work on putting together an outline, we did some research, um, we also, uh, with Mike's help, made sure that we were legal. Um, the night... The nice thing about our agenda process is we received some nice feedback. So one of the methods we used in our staff report was one model that's been used in a lot of communities, which had five, excuse me, nine to 11 board members, one of which was the town manager or designee, and then, in this particular case, we're recommending one be the Park and Rec Advisory Commission, because they oversee some of those youth services, another be the Arts Commission, because they have it. And there's language that you have in there that we talked about, there'd be a director representing programs herein, and that's your language for those things out there, that if there's an initiative or an effort that somebody wants to bring forward, the idea is, should they be willing, one of those folks can be. One of the feedbacks that we received from a member of the public, which I think has some, some strong validity, was, might we want to consider a variant that the Napa Valley School Foundation used, where they have the district superintendent as an advisory member of the body, and they also have one elected member of the trustee, that the Board of Trustees appoints as an advisory member to the body. So if that's, I'm offering that, because I think there's some value to that approach, to having those two. So in this case, I had proposed right now that the Park and Rec or designee would be an advisory, so if there's something that you felt comfortable with, I would make one round of modifications based on some of that input. Should that be something the council's comfortable with, to include three advisory members, one which would be the town manager, one which would be one member of the town council, appointed by the town council, and the Park and Rec. I'm also going to suggest reduction. I had initially written that the foundation board of directors would be no less than seven and no more than 11, and based on our, in some cases, our ability to have a sufficient number of applicants, I'm going to suggest that we drop that to a minimum of five and no more than nine. So with that, I, we've talked about this before, so if you'd like me to go into more detail, I'm willing, but I think those are some of the key, the key elements that we're looking for some feedback, and if we get your feedback, I'll bring this back and have it ready for your January 5th. I do want to also acknowledge Holly Hansen, who did some work with us on crafting some input on this, as well as Eric Knight, who provided some of that additional input, along with former Vice Mayor Chilton and the current Mayor, Vice Mayor Richard Hall, who have sort of been helping on a steering committee to, to work on some ideas and input, along with Samantha Holland-Wagner and Michael Cobden. And I, so, we're trying to come up with something we think that kind of addresses that evolving area where you'd like.
So I'll ask a quick question, Mike, of you, regarding the legality of directorship involving a council member. If there are funding decisions to be made that relate to this entity, and even if it's a non-voting capacity, is there not a conflict to have a council member?
I think there is a conflict, but I would want to do that analysis separately. I mean, the, the conflict rule's just changed, so I would want to think that through, without answering finally.
Okay, but that's for...
But I think there probably is.
Further consideration before we try to ratify anything.
Yeah, and it's not going to be based necessarily on financial interest, but maybe on a different issue, but I don't want to shoot from the hip on that one right now.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so, thank you. First of all, thank you for, this is a lot of work. I mean, I know we've been talking about this for a while, this is a lot of work, and I know there's been some agonizing experiences trying to get this thing crafted, so I appreciate all the effort. To follow on the Mayor's question, specifically with regards to council representation, should there be a, I forget the language you just used, Steve, a structure that is interested in having representation?
Advisory, please?
No, willing applicant, there should be a director representing each of the programs herein. Could a council member not be a member or a director representing that program? Are you saying that's an inherent conflict?
Well, I think there's two things that we want to look at. I want to go back and clarify, when we talked about having the advisory board member, that's a non-voting board seat, so I think we'll let Mike research that, but it's not meant to be a full-voting board member.
I'm speaking to a voting director.
Sort of an ex officier. A voting director, we did not include any of the sitting council as a voting member of the Board of Directors for the foundation.
But my question's different than that. My question is, I'll be hypothetical, let's say I was an interested party in a nonprofit in this community, and I wanted to be...
I'm going to go back to something that the town attorney is going to be, you cannot be both. You, in this case, you're wearing, if you are an elected official, you can't have what they call multiple offices. You can't represent two...
It's an incompatible office, Dr.
Right, so you can't, right.
You're never not the elected official.
Correct.
So that conflict can...
In this one, you would, right.
I understand, because I, you know how this plays into my world, so, okay. That answers my question.
Any other questions from council? So there's going to be a little further vetting. I agree with your recommendation to drop the number down to between five and nine. I think it's more realistic.
And do you have any thoughts on the advisory, and we'll, I'll work with Michael on that, and if that is appropriate, like I say, and we do have a copy of what the school district is using, so we can review that and take a look.
It's the education foundation, I think, not the school district.
Correct.
Yeah, just to be clear on that.
We'll take a look at that and bring that back, if that's something you'd like to see us take that approach.
I absolutely think that there should be town representation on this, it being an agent of the town, whether that's in a voting capacity or not, I think it depends on the legality of that. And if it's a non-council member, if it's a staff member...
Yeah.
If that person can have a voting role or not, I guess it's really more legal than, than anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about that right now, but it's not unheard of. I mean, I know of other examples of members of councils that sit, for example, as non-voting members of Chamber of Commerce, or other types of local community organizations, so it's not, I just don't know exactly how it's going to fit together for this foundation. This is sort of a newer idea that we've been batting around.
So the only other thing I wanted to ask, if I'm not hearing any other questions from the council, okay, there might be another one. In the dual role the Vice Mayor just brought up, but does not include an elected official from our council, Yountville, I'll use a hypothetical, Yountville Arts Commission member that's a non-resident, because we do allow that, yet, in this language, we say, the way I read it, all voting members need to be Towne Yountville residents.
Now, there's a caveat, if you go look, we indicate Shelby a member of the Yountville Arts Commission, so that will override that in the detail, because that is the one commission where you do allow a non...
Okay, so that was, that gets to my point. That's the only case where a non-Yountville resident is being proposed.
Assuming in this case, yes.
Potentially.
Yep, because we tried to...
Cannot be a business owner that has interest in Yountville that does not live here.
In this particular case, what they're saying in the proposal is that one member should be from the Yountville Arts Commission?
I understand that, but let's forget the Arts Commission for a moment. All members have to be residents of the town, it can't be business owners.
That's your call. If you'd like to have a broader, you could. It's written that way to, to have it be town residents managing the Town Community Foundation.
Okay.
But if you wanted to allow for no more than, say, two seats could be affiliated, those are some things that we certainly could look at.
I'm not recommending that, I'm just, I was just trying to clarify that for a moment.
As written, you are correct.
Okay, well, my, my view is, I like this idea a lot, I think there's going to be a lot of possible entities that get formed or pooled into this. So regarding our discussion about a range of five to nine board members, if we have five, I don't like the idea of having three designated as, as we have here. If we, if we move to seven, I am fine with three, I'm not even sure these are the final three, just because the majority will be at-large members. So maybe that's why you can just take home that, at least, well, we can have other council weigh in on what they like, but I'd like the majority to be at-large.
Well, I want to, let's, following that, if I want to clarify, because if we remove the town manager as a voting member to an advisory member, then you only have two designated, so then you would still have a majority at five, because I...
Well, you know, I, of all of these, I like the town manager here, as of, you have so much background, so much information and leadership, I'm, that's the one I'm pretty happy with. I also like the, the Parks and Rec, the art just seems a little too, I don't know, I want this to be very diverse and not have any sway one way or the other, you know, it's really hard, if you're a wonderful art commissioner, not to want to vote for the art stuff, and vice versa.
Well, remember, what we're looking at here, this is not, it's about how the funds, because this will be used as the 501(c)(3), so when the Arts Commission is raising funding for arts projects, it's going to come in and be designated into the, you know, the community foundation, if you think about it, it's going to have little mini checkbooks, because...
Right.
A person X may be swayed to support a children's youth program, somebody else. So we're trying to have stakeholder interest group.
Well, you know, and I totally understand that, but as you said, there are going to be like little categories in the checkbook that their money's going to go into, so...
Our biggest concern is, we have to have a minimum number to conduct business.
I'm not arguing about the minimum number.
I don't think you're, you're not getting the point, which, I understand it, but I actually feel a little bit differently about it. This being the Yountville Community Fund we're talking about, there is an interest the town has in protecting what the Yountville Arts Commission money is being spent on. So if you remove that member from a directorship, you then have funds that are being potentially collected for the Yountville Arts Commission that has no Yountville Arts Commission presence in this foundation, is that, that would be a possibility?
But they still would be, those are their funds, it was my understanding.
Non-commissioners are then determining how those funds are spent, and the Arts Commission is an agent of the town, and so I understand there is an interest the town has in protecting its agent.
And similarly, it can be said for the Youth Subsidy Fund, our other initiatives. I do want everybody to realize that this is a extension of the town. While it's a separate nonprofit foundation, it has a very much a hand-in-glove relationship with the town. This is a nonprofit designed to support a number of the initiatives and programs, parks, recreation, youth services, that are affiliated with what the town is doing. We've kept the structure open to bring in some others, but, you know, it's not its own standalone thing, because the town resources are going to be used in staffing and managing the financial accountability. So what I will say is, the Arts Commission is very interested, and, and I think you'll find them having an active interest in this. In part, they want to use this as a vehicle to help them generate funds for things that they want to do to support this. So I do think you want, what I look at them is, to me, the Park and Rec, because we have the Youth Subsidy Fund, they're kind of the pre-identified stakeholders that already are out doing stuff under the town's umbrella.
Well, and you're also listing in the language, you already identified, representing every program that's included in this foundation should be represented, so if there are other groups, let's call it the Yountville School Foundation, then that, there is a priority to getting a director that is representing the school foundation on this foundation board. And if another group that's a community nonprofit, they would have a priority over a general at-large person, because there is an interest that should be represented, just like any jurisdiction wants representation.
Okay, so now I understand, so, how that would work, because I would think the Art Commission would still have control over their money, but this makes, actually, whether they're on here or not, they actually have less control over their money.
No, I would actually say, you, you, this doesn't, disbursement is still going to come back, you're correct. The foundation can't go spend money that was raised for the art in non-art areas, the same way if it was earmarked for youth services, but this helps to make sure that the stakeholder groups are watching and they're aware. The other thing is, I would say, it makes them more comfortable with what the board is doing, so that they don't feel that the foundation board has done something to them, that rather is a support structure, but the Art Fund is still going to be managed by the recommendation of the Arts Commission, Youth Subsidy Fund, similarly.
So let me, let me play out this hypothetical, we're full of hypotheticals tonight.
It seems like it.
The Arts Commission, as its own body, wants to fund the mural project, and this foundation says, we'd rather buy a new piece of public art to put in town. Where is the priority of...
That's not the way we've written the foundation bylaws, they don't have, this foundation does not have the prerogative to make the Art Fund decisions. They need to manage the Art Fund from the fiduciary responsibility, and to make sure that the fundraising is sanctioned and legitimate and all that. That's a very good distinction. The same way, this body would not be making the individual decisions on, say, who's granted the Youth Subsidy Fund. Those would be, recommendations would come in, you know, on a monthly basis, similar to the way we do them now and go out, so I think that's a really good clarification. This foundation really governs the overall collective administration. Each of these programs, because what I would say is, they have a responsibility to review the Art Fund's recommendations, make sure that those programs meet the expenditure requirements, but that would be the level of oversight. They don't get to go, no, we don't like that piece, go do this, or no, we don't want to give that, that, that kid's not getting a scholarship, go over there. That, that's not the purview of this foundation board.
So oversight and advisory would be appropriate?
Yep.
It's acting, I believe, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
So, but I, I still also think that it's very important to have the town manager and perhaps a member of the town council, and a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and a member of the Arts Commission. However, I don't think that those, since we are, since those positions are all so much a part of the leadership of the town, that they should be in the majority of the directors of this nonprofit. You see what I'm saying? So I agree with Marjorie Moller that, you know, the Board of Directors should consist of no less than seven, and no more than nine, you could say, so that it's not five, so, and there are three members of the staff, and I, I think for, for the, for the sake of propriety, that it would not look right if, you know, people who are working for the town are a majority on the, on the nonprofit.
Councilmember Moller?
So, so what if in the future, you know, we've got four or five new groups that come in, and two of those, how many are directors, and a director of, you know, new group one and new group two come in? I'm not sure how we're going to accommodate that, if we think that each person that's part of a group that's bringing funds, that's going in the checkbook, needs to be represented on the board.
Well, I'm just saying, it may, you know, again, the challenge on some of this is you can have a range, you have to have your minimum, and I think, you know, we're also looking, just because somebody wants to, to use the foundation, they may not, because they have to agree to the fiduciary controls and all the constraints, because, for example, if nonprofit X wants to do this, they still got to bring their approval plan, you know, their expenditure plan to the foundation to make sure that it's consistent within the nonprofit's bylaws. So it has to be within those core areas, so some things may not fit. They have to agree to the oversight, because all purchases and expenditures are going to need to be, you know, they got to have purchasing processes that are consistent with the town, so, you know, we're going to look at, they can't just say reimburse member Joe because, you know, he had 500 in expenses without receipts and things, so there's some structure that, that comes with the foundation in terms of legitimacy for the role. Some of that's, we've left a little bit vague, because part of the bylaws, we can work towards some specific exhibits when somebody comes forward with some of those partner programs. The Art Fund and the Youth Subsidy Fund are pretty easy to move forward fairly quickly, because we already have those in place. Those are programs, we can expand. This all... This also allows for the potential, if somebody wants to donate funding, say, for, "Let's build a pergola for a community band stage or something in the park or something," or somebody wants to bequest property for a specific purpose towards the parks and facility, that lets us do some things that way, too. So, some of these groups, I think, to your point, councilmember Moller, we have some folks that are interested. There may be some things. Mr. Knight mentioned some things that are out there that are struggling. What it doesn't do, and this is the one caveat that I want to make sure, this provides for a level of administrative, financial, and fiduciary oversight. It does not replace content. In other words, if an organization wants to go out and do something, we're not their fundraising arm. They've got to help to generate the fundraising activity. And that's when I would say, for example, the arts commission would still have to be empowered to generate fundraising consistent with ours for that underpass project. This would allow them to use the 501(c)(3). You know, so if a donation group wanted, so there's some, some evolution that we see for some of those groups that we know that are out there that might be interested. You know, it could be something, I was mentioning the Cemetery Foundation. I don't want to say anything because there's a lot of groups that we know out there. We simply want to be a tool that could be helpful for them if it makes sense for that, that organization at a future date.
Well, and just to further what you just said, because I agree, and I think I understand it enough at this point, but it's also to give the public the opportunity to participate on a tax deductible basis for these programs, that today they have no avenue to do that.
That's right.
And, and we can certainly make sure, you know...
Other than going directly to that organization. And this would support programs that are either town-supported or sponsored, youth programs, the exercise programs that the P-Rac already provides, Parks Rec, I mean, all these things that we're already doing. This gives people in the community or outside the ability to take a tax deductible contribution to support those programs that we believe are important.
Yep. All right. We can certainly make sure that the majority of the seats are not affiliated. And that's why I say, we'll come, Mike and I will chew on a few things on the role, and we'll bring back a couple of different ideas for you on the composition in terms of either advisory or, but we hear you on that. And I think we've wrestled both ways with, you know, part of it is, we know who's got to do the work on the end of the body. So, part of that is making sure we have that structure.
Excellent. One more quick question. So, um, let's say you bring this back, where we'd be approving bylaws. Is the council, if we wanted to change the bylaws, we would be doing this in the future? So, if we went ahead with whatever we came up with, would, who would be members and name, we could always change it if it didn't work out?
Yep.
Okay. Because we're controlling the bylaws, or it's the foundation controlling the bylaws?
But the organization doesn't really exist yet, right? So, before we get to that point, the existing, there's a few steps that need to take place. The Articles of Incorporation need to be amended. And so, the existing board of the, I forget what it's called now, the Yountville School Foundation, has to approve amendments to the Articles of Incorporation. They also could change the bylaws if they wanted to, but I think it makes more sense to do the Articles of Incorporation first. And that's going to involve oversight by the Attorney General because there's some money involved. That'll be a lot easier if the foundation liquidates its assets. And then, the AG will approve the change in Articles of Incorporation. Then, the new version of this organization can amend its own bylaws according to the bylaws that exist. So, it's a little bit of a two-step process because there's two levels of governing document that need to be addressed. But I think it's probably premature for the council to be considering amendment of bylaws. It's really going to be that, that new organization that's going to need to change its bylaws. So, first we have a few steps in between. But we need council guidance and buy-in on which direction to go with any of this. And I think that's sort of where we're at now, is trying to figure out what you see this, this thing doing, how it does it, and what your role in what it does is. And then, we can craft the rest of this process around that.
Well, that's what I was just doing, is looking at your specific recommended action, which is, you want feedback, which you've been getting. Direction is to the preference of transitioning the school foundation to the Yountville Community Foundation. Are you, I'm sensing you're not getting all the action you're requesting of us tonight. Have you?
I think we're getting the feedback.
I think we did, yeah.
We got what we're...
So, is the council satisfied that we understand what we're...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think I was trying to clarify expectations that, that there are a few more steps in between from...
But this will be getting, because we need to give something, for example, what I will say, if, with this feedback, we'll be able to let the Yountville School Found, because there's actually two courses, I would say. We could go ahead and establish a brand-new foundation without working with the Yountville School Foundation. We certainly could do that. It makes sense. We have a willing, existing 501(c)(3), and we can expedite the process by, by working jointly on that. So, we'll continue down that path.
We're going to break you of the habit and get it, 501(c)(3). C3.
Like C3PO.
Thank you.
C3.
You're all welcome.
But well, once that organization is established, they'll be in charge of their own bylaws.
Well, what I also want to remember, you will be the appointing body for those members. So, I make sure that those bylaws, I mean, that's why I say, this is a, it's an independent but related. I mean, this has, you know, the purse strings, the management are all, are all through the town.
So, does the council need some type of indemnification?
You have that in the bylaws. It's in there. It's in there.
Yeah.
Automatically. Okay.
We have it. I mean, it's a pretty, this is a...
So, if you have sufficient direction, I think we're...
We do.
We're good. Okay. I'm going to cut us off right there then.
That will be done.
We're going to move on to meeting reports. There's not enough pertinent information from the flood control meeting to take our time up right now. Napa County Transportation, did you have anything that you wanted to comment on from that meeting?
Putting in a new sidewalk in front of the facility on Brunel.
Most likely.
Seems like we're...
Well, I had to recuse myself from that.
Yeah, you had to leave that part of the meeting.
And that is, it's come up on both the, actually, it hasn't come up on the expo board yet for formal action, but...
The NCTPA.
Yes. The other thing is, the Yountville Park and Ride grant deed has, has changed hands officially. So, that's the NCTPA report, soon to be the Napa County, Napa Valley Transportation Authority. Anything critical with waste management, or can I move on?
No, I reported on that last time.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to report out on, I think, is just a hearty congratulations and thank you to Paul and Linda Moyer and, and team. Samantha, Lisa, I'm sure all of us that were supporting it from the community hall perspective on the Thanksgiving dinners, the community dinners. It's a wonderful tradition that continues, but it's not without significant work. And Paul and Linda have taken on that charge since the Delinskis. So, thank you to them. Also, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for the Festival of Lights and Santa's visit. Hopefully, we'll have Santa back in not too long for our tree lighting ceremony, which is Thursday night, December 10th. And that's expected to be about 5:30, I believe. Nice and dark and probably cold. Very appropriate for a tree lighting.
I have a couple of meeting updates.
Okay. Vice Mayor has a brief...
I have a comment, too.
Okay. Everybody has some talk. It's 20 to 10. All right. Vice Mayor, meeting reports.
Yes. So, I attended the watershed, what are they calling it now? Watershed Information Conservation Commission?
Council.
Council. Thank you. As the alternate for, Councilmember Doran Becker, I think we're taking oath of office. That was fun. Yeah, I didn't understand it. Anyways, they gave reports, the conservation, the Resource Conservation District, I think is what they're called, gave a report on the trout fish fisheries or trout in recovery back in Napa County. It's actually an exhaustive report that was done. Napa County, interestingly enough, has the highest, greatest, or has the most, well, I don't even know how to say this anymore, has the greatest potential for trout within its rivers throughout all of the North Bay and maybe even Northern California. The capacity potential was, was remarkable. It's like five or 10x the nearest county. So, please keep your waterways clean. These fish are trying to make a comeback, and this is the county they can do it in. It's a significant home. We also had a presentation by, by a group from Silverado Middle School who's got a sort of a Go Green initiative of their own. And these are, you know, these are kids that are between the ages of, I don't know, 11 and 13 or 14. And just really some remarkable stuff being done by our youth out there. And I know, as a member of the Go Green Team in our local community, there's a lot of involvement. You know, please support these, these young leaders because they're going to be the people that are taking care of all of us when we're older, in lots of different ways. There was a presentation on the, it was really a presentation on weather throughout Northern California, but it principally focused in on Sonoma and Napa Counties. And the data that was presented, and I forget the group, but it was, it's this study center up in the mountains here in the Myakamas. They basically presented, and it may not make people feel...
Pepperwood.
Pepperwood. Reminds me of...
I've seen those.
Yeah. Pepperwood's that story from The Beatles. Remember that movie?
Isn't Sergeant Pepper's?
No, it's, I'll have to remember now. Yellow Submarine. Anyways, that said, they basically presented that, even though it may feel like it's going to be wetter when we have El Niños, the reality is that we live in an arid landscape and that it will continue to get drier. And even if it feels wet in the summertime, it will get drier. At least that was their analysis. Interesting presentation, but certainly not one that I think we're all surprised by. But it was good data that they provided and a lot of very scientific stuff that went over my head. Councilmember Moller would have appreciated, I'm sure. It was all very, very scientific. And then, lastly, there was a presentation by, is it David Morrison from the planning, County Planning Commission?
Public Works, is it?
No.
Planning?
Planning Commission.
Director of Planning with regards to all of the current and pending winery use permits that are out there. And as a town, obviously, we're uniquely impacted by that because we have tasting rooms here and we sort of encourage visitation, whereas in the county, there is a lightning bolt that strikes down on you if you even suggest that you want to have visitors. That is the, the current MO, or at least apparently so. And I think that the Board of Supervisors will have a discussion about this, maybe next couple of days?
December 8th.
Thank you. So, it was a very good, informative meeting. I'm glad I got to attend on your behalf.
Thank you.
They, they actually were nice to me, unlike, you know, most of the meetings I go to where they try to get me to leave early. That said, I did attend one other meeting for behalf of the town, and that was the Napa Youth Gang Violence Commission, which meets basically quarterly in some different part of the valley, with the exception of Yountville. So, this last meeting was in Napa, and that's by, and their bylaws, no less, that they'll meet in every community, with the exception of Yountville. I've lobbied them to change that so I don't have to commute. With that being said, there was a couple of presentations, every high school principal in the Napa Valley, and that includes American Canyon, Vintage High, and Napa, no, sorry, Napa and Vintage...
St. Helena's a high school.
No, no, no. And just, I'm sorry, in Napa Valley Unified School District. And New Tech came and presented on their, on their different programs that they incorporate to keep kids out of trouble and out of, out of difficulty with gangs and things like that. And we don't think of gangs as being very significant in Napa Valley because we just don't have the same issues that they have in other communities. The reality is, they're here, you know, be aware. You know, they're, they're not necessarily as nefarious as you might expect, but they are around. The secondary, or the second presentation was by a really outstanding group of a couple of police officers in Napa, sheriffs, sheriffs in Napa County called the Legacy Project. And basically, what this is, is a group, and I think they've maybe talked to folks here in town before, these guys have put together a group in a couple of the high schools where they engage Latino, Hispanic males and females in high school, and now they're actually moving into the middle schools, to engage them and to get them to understand a sense of culture and their history and their background, and getting them re-engaged in what school is and, you know, how to be individuals rather than joining a group or a gang or being outside of, you know, what we might all consider as, as healthy sort of activity for people of that age. So, it was really a good meeting. You know, these are, these are sort of issues that don't, they're not real dominant here in Yountville because of our population and our size and geography. But the reality is, we're in the middle of a bigger valley, and all these other communities are affected by, by these things. And certainly, our kids that live in this community are going to be a part of those communities in the long term. And so, it's just, it's fun to be a part of these groups and, you know, meet with some of the other local people that are doing wonderful things in our community. So, I encourage you, if you have any, any questions about that, reach out to me. Let me know. I'll, you know, I'm happy to gather information. But I was really impressed by this Legacy Project and these, these two, these two guys. And the people, the kids they had come speak in front of a room of like 50 people, I mean, these are, these are teenage kids. And, you know, they're coming up and telling you about how bad life is at home and how they've been able to overcome difficulties because these groups exist to support them. And so, you know, where you have opportunities to support these organizations, monetary, time, advice, otherwise mentoring, you know, please take the time to do that because the youth is your future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Thank you. I would like to bring to your attention that we had discussed having a plastic bag ban in the town of Yountville. All of the other four cities in the county have passed that, and we were waiting for the state. And the state did pass a plastic bag ban, but it is tied up in the courts at this time. So, I was wondering if we could bring that back for discussion. I had some contact from Grania Lindberg of Napa Valley Can Do. And she, I told her that one of the things we're concerned about in Yountville is that we have many gift stores and gift bags. And so, she sent me a copy of one of the sections of the ordinance that St. Helena passed in which they excluded gift bags and they, it defines gift bags and excludes them from the ban for these, for this particular thing. So, I was like, I would like to bring it back for us to consider. In January, it will be discussed and heard by the, the county supervisors. So, I think it's time for us to get on board.
I would suggest, recommend, or direct, actually, that go to the Go Green Team for discussion prior to coming back to the council. So, that would be, that's going to be my recommendation, that we put that on the agenda for the Go Green Team to do more research before we get back.
And so, the plastic bag ban?
Yeah. If it's about environmental sustainability.
Well, I'd also like to recommend we have the town attorney look into that because there was a law that said you had to meet the deadline, I think it was September 1st, 2014. If you didn't have any local ban in place at that time, the state law would supersede. So, could you address that to see whether we could even do anything outside of that? Because it was, it did pass. It's just now being held up. So, technically, we need a legal opinion.
It hasn't been enacted, though. It passed, but hasn't been enacted. Right. Isn't that the case? It's been appealed or whatever the status is.
Yeah, I think it's still been enacted, though.
Right, right.
It's been challenged, so it may not have a practical effect.
Okay.
But the preemption may still be an issue.
Right.
But the exact contours of that preemption, I don't know. Sometimes preemption is total, sometimes it's partial. But I can get back to you with some information.
I don't want to put one in place if we're already preempted.
It would be moot.
Right.
Yeah. So, I would like to hear about that.
Okay.
And that's, I was recommending the Go Green Team because this is, it's an environmental sustainability issue fundamentally. And before the council puts additional time into it or before staff puts even more resources into research, I would recommend we hand that off to a team that's already in place.
A couple of things that I would say. Most of the staff work's already been done because you guys were evaluating this, and we came up short just at that point because of where the state was. We're well aware of the St. Helena modifications, and we have some, but I think the comment about, is the preemption still in place is probably the most important thing for us to understand because if it is, it's sort of a moot point all the way around. From staff standpoint, we've, you know, if you may recall, and I'm going to say that it's been a while for all of you, but we had to actually restructure our ordinance some because we don't have a lot of the size retailers that, most of the big box and some of those. So, our ordinance was already customized to fit Yountville. So, there's not a lot of staff work, other than coming back to the, the policy direction by the council at that point in time was, we don't need to do something that the state's already going to do because then we get stuck with the... already going to do because then we get stuck with the enforcement and the management of it, and we'd rather have the state do it.
Well, there was also a county effort that we were counting on...
The county effort is only...
Some question whether it would trump our own...
The county, I'll, a quick clarification on that. The county ordinance would only apply in the unincorporated county. And the same way, our ordinance only applies in our jurisdiction.
But there was an attempt so, so that you didn't have to go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction with a different rule everywhere you went.
We worked with that group. I spent far too much time in meetings with that group, and that's why we finally had to say, ours was built on the general framework of that coalition with some size adjustments because they were using some measures that simply didn't work in Yountville.
So let's, let's have our attorney see what the status is before we have additional conversations.
I will, but I'm just saying, we'll find that out, and then...
We could readdress the issue. Okay, great.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one report that I hadn't given, and that is that I attended the Directors and League Leaders Meeting of the League of California Cities to talk about the three strategic goals for 2016. And we all met and went through quite a few workshops and things. And these are the three strategic goals that have been chosen. Number one is to increase funding for critical transportation and water infrastructure, provide additional state and federal financial assistance, and new local financing tools to help meet the critical transportation, streets, bridges, active transportation and transit, and water supply, sewer, stormwater, flood control, et cetera, infrastructure maintenance and construction needs throughout California cities. Number two is to improve housing affordability, increase state and federal financial support, reduce regulatory barriers, and provide additional incentives and local finance tools to address chronic homelessness and improve housing affordability and availability in cities throughout the state. And the third one is update the local government tax structure to respond to the new economy and stimulate economic growth, consistent with existing constitutional protections for property sales and local taxes. Develop and enact reforms to the local government tax structure to respond to the growth in e-commerce, the shift from consumption of goods to the consumption of surfaces, the changing patterns of commerce and innovations in technology. So those are the three strategic goals that the League of California Cities will be working on, on our behalf.
And I attended a conference of the North Bay Division of the executive officers where we discussed our local strategic goals and, and topics of quarterly meeting, topics. So at this late hour, I'm not going to go into those details. Do you have something additional, Councilmember Moller?
Uh, yes. In the past many, many years, I don't know how many, the Boy Scout troop in Napa has been picking up our Christmas trees. This year, they will not be picking up Christmas trees that people put out on the street in Yountville. So plan accordingly, get yourself out, chop it up, or...
So they, they don't have the resources to come to Yountville, is what I understand. Is that accurate?
Uh, they basically, I, I think the troop is so small that they can no longer service our area.
Right.
And we don't have a Yountville Boy Scout troop.
Okay. Any further business? Hearing, hearing none. We do not have a closed session tonight, thankfully. So we will adjourn to our meeting of January 5th, so I guess it's a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah to all coming up. And don't forget, December 10th, town tree lighting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.